...to the May 30th meeting of the Fitchburg City Council as a whole committee. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and city of residence. Seeing none at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode. Counselor Walsh, would you please lead us in salute to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Walsh?
Here.
President Zerella?
Here.
Counselor Boshman?
I'm present.
Thank you. Counselor Kuchar?
Here.
Counselor Cregan?
Here.
Counselor Cruz?
Here.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Here.
Counselor Fleming?
Here.
Counselor Green?
Here.
Counselor Schultz?
Here.
And Counselor Van Hazinga?
Here.
We have a full board of 11 members present.
Thank you very much. Public forum, we have no one logged in remotely. I know we have Ms. Wetchy on the sign-in sheet. After that point, if anyone else in the audience wishes to address the council, you may also approach the center podium, identified by name and city of residence. And the agenda, well, tonight, I guess, agenda item isn't really relevant, but two minutes.
Jaclyn Wetchy, Fitchburg resident, you should cut this budget a lot. The purpose of government is not to create jobs and benefits for government workers, it is to serve the public. This budget does not. It relies on one-time revenues opening the door to the claim. The taxes must be raised. The public is already struggling with big property tax increases that came last year due to the revaluations, as well as increases in utilities and other essentials. Our backs are breaking. By cutting the budget, you free up money that can be used in a variety of beneficial ways. Number one, you could put money in our emergency fund in case we face more unexpected costs, such as we did last year with floods and skyrocketing medical. Number two, paving is being cut this year, some Chapter 90 money is diverted to non-paving. You can redirect it back to paving where it belongs. Number three, you can reduce the tax levy and give residents a break. There's nothing that says you have to max out what you can charge. This budget is going up by $10 million, that's over 6%, and it's only supposed to be 2.5%. You should cut it to 2.5%. That's what the residents in the state voted for. Time to stop the loopholes that keep raising our taxes, time to stop recognizing revenue prematurely, this year to the tune of $500,000 and last year $800,000. Time to exhibit the same fiscal discipline and responsibility that your constituents do every day. You have some time to think about this, because the special council meeting planned for immediately after this meeting was not posted with 48 hours notice in the Agenda Center and cannot be held tonight, as it will violate open-meeting law. A word to the wise avoids an open-meeting law complaint.
Further public comment? All right. I do wish to note, number one, yes, we are aware that the special meeting was not posted, that's on me. Number two, the Agenda Center is not the official posting location for the city of Now, we have a number of budget orders in front of us, but of course, we will begin with the budget itself and with the cuts proposed there, too. I would like to just remind everyone, as promised, there will be ample opportunity to discuss the proposed cuts in full. However, I do ask everyone to still remain focused on the cuts proposed and the subsequent budget orders that we take up. There are other opportunities for more wide-ranging inquiries and discussion. Also, sorry, lost track of my thought. So, the first set of cuts we have proposed are to the salary of the city council itself. I will allow each of the other proponents, of course, their opportunity to introduce those cuts. I do wish to note that I spoke earlier today with Attorney Mead and verified that there is a procedure available, I'm getting details forwarded at a later time, by which any of us as counselors can submit a document to HR to waive part of our salary rather than changing it by ordinance. So I just wanted to throw that out there at first and make it known that that is an option, which further details will be provided on as they become available. Counselor Cruz, would you like to introduce your cut first? For the record, I'm going by largest cuts first and then by alphabet.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just, I think that we have, as everyone knows, we have a tough situation and that cuts are needed, and that the priorities of our constituents are the most important and the things they'd like to see, which we hear on a regular basis, and it's our job to represent our constituents. Having said that, I did not in good conscience think that I could introduce cuts to other departments and other people in the city without first offering it myself. But when we look at these things and take a hard look at them, we need to take a look at our own department as well and our own legislative body. And I'm not going to propose cuts without first making a small sacrifice, whatever it may be, if I can, that I think could pass today. But that's pretty much it. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz, would you care to speak to your proposal?
Yeah, on the city council, I have the same, had the same sentiment that Counselor Cruz had, that we can't expect to cut other salaries without cutting our own. And I, two years ago, almost two years ago, I voted against raising our salary, because I didn't think we could afford it then, and I still believe that now, and it's come into more focus presently with our budget situation. So, I proposed the same actual amount as Counselor Cruz and Counselor Zerella, that it be cut by $11,000 down to 12? What was the cut? Yes. A cut of $11,000 down to 132. And it is, it had been 10 years, so I came up with that figure, 2% a year over the 10-year period. And I also, and I know we're not discussing it now, but I use the same philosophy for the mayor's cut, that it would be 2%, her raise would be 2% over 10 years. So that's how I came up with that figure. And I just think we have to lead from the top, that we need to make the cut in order to look at anyone else's. I think, at this point, everything should be on the table. I yield the floor.
Thank you. I'll skip over myself for the moment. Counselor Cregan?
Sure. I'm in accord with both counselors, and I, this is my only cut. I have been serving for two and a half years. I work really hard at this job. I certainly work more than full-time sometimes. Some days, I don't work that as much, but I just felt it was, for my own accountability, I thought, you know what, I'm just going to put this out there and let's see what happens.
Thank you. I'll echo those sentiments. Really, mine was put forward for the same reason, that I don't want to cut anywhere else without looking to ourselves first. That being said, I, in light of the information I received earlier today, I will actually be withdrawing my own proposal, not because I disagree with its principle, but because I feel that doing a salary waiver of some sort is likely the cleaner and more efficient way of doing this, rather than voting a cut in the budget and then voting an ordinance change later on. I will, obviously, there is no way for me to prove tonight that my intention is, in fact, to execute such a waiver when the information on how to do so becomes available, but that is indeed my intent, and it will be to the tune of $1,000 out of the $13,000 counselor's And, yeah, I'll hold other comments for later. I have Counselor Gina Tally.
I oppose this proposal. I am not taking a reduction. I understand the methodologies and the motivations of my colleagues for putting this forward. It's the same methodologies and rationale provided for the last 17 years that I've been here. The city clerk by law is allowed to put forward to the council every two years the mayor and the city council stipends for bi-annual review. I voted four times prior to last year to not visit our stipends. In actuality, I voted four times to not raise the pay. The salaries that we make weren't touched in 10 years. I don't believe there's any employee in this city or in any city or private sector entity that hasn't gotten an increase in 10 years. The reason why the council voted for the increase last year is because it wasn't touched in 10 years. And there was the understanding on the council's part when we voted for this, that there would be some baked-in CPI index going forward, so we don't have to do this ever again. We take the politics out of it. So, that is the rationale for why I voted for the raise last year. It's on par with Lemonster, since we all love to compare ourselves to them, and I don't buy the argument that, well, if I'm going to propose a reduction in someone's pay, then I got to cut my own. I didn't do this job for sustenance. You can't live on 13 grand a year. So, to discuss a salary of 150,000 or 125,000 versus what essentially comes down to $1,000, is it false comparison? It's optics, in my opinion. So, that is the difference between our stipends and everybody else's pay. We haven't had an increase in 10 years, and the council, over those 10 years, voted four times to not even look at it. And my understanding last year was, based on our vote, we weren't going to look at it again, because it was going to be up to market rate forces at that point, so we don't have to vote on this anymore. But in addition, now that there's some new information from the president about what we legally can do individually, if counselors do not believe that they feel emboldened in taking the increase, and I hate calling it a raise, because, I mean, 10 years without one, and none of us can live on this, if you feel that inclined to reduce your pay as a show of force, then do it on your own, and the rest of us will make that choice on our own. The city council years ago used to collect health insurance benefits. We removed that in 2015. We no longer collect health insurance benefits. We haven't touched our salary in 10 years. We've taken a lot of hits. We've taken a lot of sacrifices. So what I'm trying to say to my colleagues is, for those who voted for this last year, keep your heads up about it. You're not tone deaf to what everyone else is going through, because there's a rationale behind why we did that. And there's a further rationale of why we did that, because we're not going to revisit it, I would hope. So, I'm against these cuts, but I appreciate the sentiments and the motivations of my colleagues. I've heard them before. I just, I feel like we're going to play whack-a-mole with our pay. In a good year, we can raise it, in a bad year, we don't. That's why you tie it to CPI. Let CPI figure it out, and we go home and don't have anything to do with it, which is what I thought we were going to do. So, I'm opposed to these. Thank you.
Counselor Boshman?
I feel the same way. I will not vote for this. I'm totally against it. I keep on telling my fellow counselors that if you want to get a great qualified candidate, you got to have something there so they'll come to the table and run. This job is not an easy job, and I know every one of you work hard, just like I work hard, and it's not an easy job. And when you look out there and you see two people running for a council at large and one person running in a law council, there's something wrong with the system, and we're not doing it right. So when you cut pays, you're not accomplishing, you're hurting government. You're not helping government, we're hurting government. We're making government stagnant. You know, come up with no new ideas. People don't take this job because of $11,000. I didn't take it. I wanted to make a change in it. But I put a lot of hours in, like everybody else does, and that's my problem. And what bothers me the most? What bothers me the most? I'll tell you all it's what bothers me the most. When we try to look good to the public and we're saying we're taking a $2,000 raise, really? Really? And we make a big difference in the council? I'm upset today. I had a rough day. And I said, really? We're going to make a big difference to the city of Fitchburg? $33,000? Really? We waste more than that. You want to talk about cuts? Look at the cuts. Look at the cuts and cut them.
Counselor?
Great. All right. I just want to tell people, before I end up before, I had a rough day today. There's a good song out by Joey Row. It's not, "I'm Not Okay." That's the name of the song. So, listen to it, because if I seem kind of crabby, it was a heck of a day today. Started off with a phone call. Thank you.
Vice President Van Hazinga?
I just wanted to note that the salaries for both the city counselors and the mayor are governed by the city charter, so procedurally, it requires an ordinance change, but also that ordinance change cannot go into effect until the calendar year after in which the change is made. So that even if we propose cuts to either the city council salaries or the mayoral salary, they cannot go into effect until January 1st. So, the applicability to this year's budget is limited for the next six months. So, any cut that you look at on a monthly basis would actually be doubled, starting in January, if we're going to make these cuts. Just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, I still maintain that, you know, the budget needs help this year, and just because we have a waiver, you know, I don't know how many of the counselors are actually going to pursue that waiver, other than Council President Zerella, so I definitely still want to pursue this cut and help the city address some of the needs that the constituents want. And as Ms. Wetchy said during her comment, it's paving. They want the roads paved, and we want to devote as much money to paving the roads that we can. And we got to start somewhere. Thank you. I yield the floor.
I'll get you in just a sec. I just wanted to respond to a couple of the points raised, very valid points. First, as far as the CPI ordinance, after we voted on the increases, we investigated the possibility of the ordinance, discovered that the state will not allow us to set council salaries by formula or mayoral salaries. We have to actually vote on every change. And since then, I've been working and I hope to touch base soon with the legal department on what the closest thing we can get is to what we had originally intended, but that will have to be a discussion for a future night. I agree, the hope had been to never have to look at this again, but that's not viable, legally speaking. Otherwise, I just wanted to say, you know, I think that's one of the virtues, well, two of the things raised are among the virtues, as I see it, of having voluntary waivers. Number one, each counselor can decide for themselves what is right for them. You know, some counselors may simply feel that it's not incumbent on them to make that waiver, and that's fine. Nothing, nothing that I'm saying, at least from my own part, is intended to imply that fellow counselors are wrong if they decide not to take the same route. Other counselors may be in a situation where $1,000 a year actually makes a concrete, you know, tangible difference to their household finances, and that's fine, you know. Certainly, I don't want anyone here, any of my colleagues, to have issues with their finances. The other advantage is that for those of us who do decide to go that route, it can become effective immediately. It doesn't have to wait until January 1st, it doesn't have to wait until after next year's elections, it can just become effective. And lastly, yes, yes, a portion of this is optics. You know, that's not necessarily a bad thing, in my view. No, even if we were to cut the full $11,000 from council salaries, no, that's not going to make an impactful difference on the city budget. But for me, at least, it's just about the principle of the thing. I would not feel comfortable not looking at my own finances and saying, can I afford to chip in somehow? That's my decision. I'm not implying that needs to be anyone else's, but that's my decision. Counselor Gina Tally?
I heard the comment about what our constituents want. We just had an election. We voted for these increases months prior to the election. It was well documented, it was well publicized, and everybody who voted for these increases were returned. Don't believe the constituents are hanging their hat on whether or not we change our base pay by $3,000 over 10 years, with the understanding, and I'll call it right now, that number's not going to get increased again for another 10 years at least. It's not. How do I know that? Next year, when we're required by law to look at our pay again, who here is going to vote for another increase after this budget and the next? Nobody. I'm guessing. But every, the last two increases the council granted were in 10-year increments, 2013 and 2023. I mean, and every time we do it, there's an election that immediately follows it. So, I don't know about anybody else, but I didn't get calls knocking on my door, oh, what did you do that for? When I actually explained to people, first of all, they didn't know what we made. When I told them 13, they were shocked. One gentleman who's on social security said to me, I thought you guys make like 100 grand a year. I said, no, that's Boston, you know, because that's a full-time, you know, you've got 100,000 constituents, you know? Some of our residents don't even know what we make. When you tell them it's 10 or 13 grand, they go, huh? You put up with this for 13 grand? I said, yes, because we love the job. We're not here for the money. But at the same time, there needs to be some level of sanity with what we're making in order to keep us afloat. And again, no one in this city, if there's a concern about parity, went without a raise for 10 years. We're the only ones. The mayor's the only, position is the only one. Only the elected officials went without anything for 10 years. So I don't, I can sleep well at night, okay, because we took a lot of sacrifices, and that other point I made is still holding true. We opted nine years ago to forego health benefits. We were eligible for health benefits predating the prior administration, and we as a council, I was one of them, I was one of the co-sponsors, we got rid of it. We got rid of it. So, we've made sacrifices. We don't do this job for the pay, but every now and then, we need to be honest with keeping it up a little bit. And so, again, the council's going to do what they're going to do, and I'm not going to, you know, die on the sword on this issue, but fall on the sword on this issue, but I just, if your concern is we look like hypocrites, because we're not going to do to ourselves what we're going to do to others, I'm trying to give you an out and say, name me one person in this room or outside this room who didn't get a raise in 10 years. Thank you.
Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that since we're voting on the 2025 budget, we should make cuts that take place in this budget. The fact that if you vote for this, it's not going to take place until the next budget, I think it makes no sense, whereas there's another option that you've suggested, and that's a waiver. And every counselor is free to make that decision, him or herself. And that cut would take place currently. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, with that information, that is true, Counsel Walsh, but I think our budgets in the subsequent years are going to be just as tight, so I would like to, I still would like to put that motion forward, and I'd like to, at this time, if no one else needs to talk, I'd like to make a motion to put that cut forward.
All right. Counselor Cregan, just checking, you intend to maintain your cut as well?
Yep.
Okay. Then, do I have a second to vote first? We're going to do this per Roberts rules. We rarely have the opportunity where there are multiple amounts proposed for a single motion. We're going to first vote on the largest cut. If that succeeds, we stop. If it fails, we go immediately, without a new motion, to the second-largest cut. And if there were more than two, we would continue going down the ladder. So I have a motion and second. Anyone on the motion? All right, now, all in favor of cutting $11,000 from the council budget? I see two in opposition.
Wait, two in favor, you mean?
Two in favor, yes. In opposition?
Wait, how we?
All right?
I don't understand.
You're in opposition. No, what, we're voting first on cutting $11,000 from the council salary line item.
I'm against that.
All right. So, motion fails by a vote of two to nine. Next, we have all in favor of cutting $7,700 from the council salary line item. I see two in favor, all opposed. All right, motion fails by two to nine. Next, we have Counselor Gina Tally, your cut of $2,000 to the city council's advertising line item.
So this cut is based on a five-year analysis of spending in the line item. Only one year out of the last five, we've spent more than $15,000 than I'm proposing we set the budget at. The average spend over the last five years is $12,000, so this would be 20% above the five-year average, even with this cut. And four of the last five fiscal years, we spent considerably lower than the 15. So there is some minor contingency in there that I think, given the circumstances of our budget, we can survive by having this at 15 and not 17, based on the fact that we haven't spent 15 in four of the last five years. So 20% above the average still.
Counselor, just a quick point of clarification, if you don't mind. I'm looking at our last five years and seeing 24, 195 for FY '23 and a projected 29 for FY '24.
Glad you brought this up.
Go ahead.
I take no stock in that projected number.
Okay.
And I'll tell you why. First, because it was a number, as we got testified to last week, was based on through January actuals. Secondly, through April actuals, we have spent, sorry, my filters are off. Through April, we have spent on advertising with encumbrances $5,169 for a total projected spend of the year of $6,200, not $29,000. So unless we have $25,000 in expenses coming up in the next two weeks, I don't believe that number. And I don't believe many of these numbers, because they're based on old data that no longer applies. So there's only four of the last five fiscal years, and if anyone doesn't believe me, I'll pull up the status E right now and show you what the number is. It's five grand. That's all we spent. We're not spending $25,000 in two months. We never have. And I'm not criticizing anyone. The projections don't hold water, which is why every year I've been on this council, I never look at it. And I advise my colleagues, don't look at it either. It's not real. It's to justify the next year's number. That's the game.
That's why I asked, Counselor, I figured you'd have an answer. Counselor Van Hazinga?
I just had a question for the city clerk, if she could offer any information as to why the advertising expenses were so much higher in FY '23, which isn't a projected number, that's an actual recorded number.
And I've done my research on that, and I believe it was two-way main and all the ordinance changes that, because every time we do an ordinance change, we have to advertise that twice.
Okay.
So, and we, if I do a poll hearing, I bill Unitil, I bill Comcast for those legal postings. I tried to bill Tom Swarwsky the first visit, and he told me I couldn't do it. I did try. So anytime we do a city ordinance change, that's what we bill. So I think that was all the two-way main conversions that we kept advertising for in our legal posting.
Okay.
And I did give money back this year with the auditor out of that as well.
Okay. So it looks like in your initial request, that you did go down So it looks like in your initial request, that you did go down from the 20 far to 17. Do you think it's feasible to do 15 and go down a little farther? Or what do you, what's your opinion as the main?
I do. President Sola and I spoke of it today. And Betsy and I made a commitment that we will watch that. And if we see it is that a lot of ordinances are coming or a lot of those types of things causing that, then we would right away start talking about supplemental funding. But I think we will be okay. I'm going to try very hard to watch that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Janice Haly.
Just to clarify, you will see in many of these cuts that I proposed, the same methodology applies. If there is a one-year outlier, but the other four years don't show it, that should not mean that we should stick with the one-year outlier. In budgetary finance, no entity does it that way. You don't say, I'm going to budget 30,000 because one year out of the last 10, I spent 30,000. You look at the other nine years because you discount 90% of the model, which no one does. So all these cuts I proposed, the nickel and dime ones in the expense accounts, it's because it's rarely used. And if we are such in a budget crunch as we are, if for some reason we spend two grand more than we are budgeting this year, if it's really 17, I think we can find the $2,000. But I'm telling people, based on the analysis, and I'm not a soothsayer, 80% of the timeframe never came close to 15. So just to caution everybody, there may be a year outlier. We shouldn't base our budget going forward based on an outlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I believe you had something to add?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, based on, you know, our original request, which is provided in the addendum to our budget. The original request for advertising was $35,000. Auditor Cronin and I saw that, and Auditor Cronin spoke to the city clerk to hone down that number, and that number ended up at 17,000.
Thank you. I'll just say, I appreciate the diligence from Counselor Janice Haly. Having had it explained that way and having discussed it with the city clerk, it makes sense. You know, I think that the mayor and the finance team have done a very good job presenting us with a balanced budget in a tough time. But if in fact there are any projections that are, I guess maybe we could say, more conservative than they need to be, then it might be worth looking at those because, you know, that would give us a little bit more freedom for things that aren't, you know, things that we know we need to spend. With, of course, you know, the caveat that we wouldn't want to say, hey, free windfall, let's put this into something and then not have any money to spare if we go over. But go ahead.
I just want to remind everybody too, if you recall in the finance committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, the administration wanted us to reduce 164,000 from critical parks and playgrounds improvements to close the gap in this budget. And therefore, I want you to be mindful of that when we look at these cuts because the committee and the full council adopted the committee's recommendation that we would go forward and find 164,000 to stave off those critical parks and playground improvement cuts. So if you add it all up, it comes to over $300,000. I know some might be like, oh, $2,000, who cares? And I sympathize in some cases. But if you apply the method uniformly, it adds up to a lot. If you can't find any cuts but 2,000, who cares? But if you see the rest of them on the page, and also be mindful of the fact that in my 17 years doing this, there's never been a department head who says, sure, cut it. Better yet, double it. Everyone here is not going to say, cut it. They're going to give you chapter and verse, why not to do it? The sky's going to fall if you do it. Don't believe it. We had 6.8 million in free cash certified last year. Cutting 300,000 ain't going to put the city in jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you. So do we have a, do we have any further comments? Or do we have a motion on this?
Make a motion, we sit.
Second.
I have a motion and second to cut $2,000 from the city council's advertising budget or line item. All in favor? In opposition? Passes unanimously. Next, we have a $3,000 cut to the council's education and travel line item. Going alphabetically, we have Counselor Janice Haly.
Thank you. This cut I've proposed several times with no success. This, if you recall, is a new line item, a fairly new line item. Council didn't have this before. Looking at the budget, just for my own edification, right, we didn't start putting this in the budget until five or six years ago. And prior to that, it never existed. The thought was, you know, councillors want to train, you know, like MMA meetings, they want to go to city events or go outside of the city for events, the whole nine yards, then we should have a travel expense like everybody else. This kind of goes with what we were talking about with our salaries in the sense that if you want to show some good faith effort, this is the line item to get rid of. Because if for no other reason, we just voted for the position to get a $3,000 increase. So if you really are hard pressed to want to not spend your own money on travel expenses, well, we just gave the position a one-year 30% increase. If you just go from 10,000 to 13,000, that's a 30% increase, then use it out of that increase. My point is, is that we shouldn't have a travel expense. I guess I'm biased because I've never needed it. I've never used it. And even if I wanted to use it, I wouldn't. But I don't disparage anyone who has. But it's a newer line item. It never existed predating like 2017 or 2016. And so if you want to show a good faith effort, this is the one I think you should get rid of, especially in lieu of our pay raise. I mean, just my two cents. I mean, it's small. It's not 11,000 or 7,000, but it's a sign of, not only do we give ourselves a one-year 30% increase, we're going to keep our travel expenses, which is sporadically used. Sometimes it's used, sometimes it's not. So I justify the cut this year more than any year because we just raised our pay. So if anyone had trouble affording travel expenses then, well, we just got a bump of three grand. So I don't think we need this. And that's just my two cents. I mean, I've never needed, I've always used. I drive to work every day. I don't get compensated for mileage. I don't believe we should be compensated for mileage here. So I never liked this line item, but this year more than any, I think, is justifiable in getting rid of it. Thank you.
Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counselor Janice Haly. This is rarely used. I think if it were applied fairly for each councillor, it would be less than $275 per councillor. I think that we're all capable of chipping in $275 if we want to do any kind of education and travel. So for that reason, I would cut this entirely. Thank you.
Thank you. And as the last proponent of the cut, I'll just say I agree with everything that's been said. I think that we've talked in past years about some of the benefits of this line item. And I don't necessarily disagree. You know, I know there have been councillors who get a lot of benefit out of going to the MMA conference and so on. And I want all of my colleagues to be maximally equipped to do the best work they can for the city. But ultimately, this line item is a luxury. This is something that is not essential for us to carry out our duties under the charter. And so in a year like this, it should go away. Counselor Kuchar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to note my agreement with Counselor Janice Haly, Counselor Walsh, and yourself, Mr. President. You know, I think it's well-known amongst my constituents that I do a weekly ward ride around the ward, just taking a look around, making sure everything's in order. You know, if I see something, I report it. Do I charge for gas money? No. That's the reason why I get paid. You know, I get the stipend that I do to pay for the things that I do for my ward. As for travel outside of the city, for any kind of city function or city event or something that I have to go to for the city, I use my own money because that's exactly the same reason why I get the stipend that I do. So I think this is just wasted money. I don't think it's necessary. And I really do appreciate the cut, and I would be in full support of it.
Thank you. Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk, the 3,000 for education and travel, did this, was this used to cover the event at the Fay Club between cities? I'm not sure. We had an event at the Fay Club.
The Tri-City Dinner?
Yeah. We had gardener, Lemister city councillors, and it was a, you know, networking and educational in the sense that we got together to discuss the cities. And it was very beneficial for me personally. I remember mayors were there. It was beneficial. So I know we think that, you know, this gas money, things of that nature. And to the councillor for Ward 3's credit, I have attended the MMA conferences, and I never asked for a refunded gas money like that. But there are expenses here that are used for this line item that it doesn't get doled directly back to councillors when they ask for it. It's for other uses, correct?
I do not, I can't recall. I don't know if it came out of office supplies or education and travel.
Okay.
I believe I would have pulled it out of office supplies because it wasn't educational or travel that you were going to. When I consider educational, that's the MMA for the hotel room. More of the MMA conference information goes there than that. But I can look up tomorrow and tell you exactly.
Does any of the funding go directly to our, like our subscription MMA? We get the emails and statistics and surveys, and we can attend Zoom conferences. Does it go to that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boishman.
I totally disagree on this 100%. I think we're making a big mistake. I think it's very educational. I think people, this council or any council should go to these MMA. You learn things by sitting in a class and listening to guest speakers and also walking around tables. Former councillor Donley used to get very, very upset with the council because they didn't want to get educated. They didn't even know half the stuff that was going on. Ha! And we're going to cut this where you can benefit the whole city and it helps the whole city? On $3,000, you complaining about? And you're educating me to understand different things? Really? I never put in for travel. I've been there, I've been going every year. I think I missed one time since I've been on here. And then I never traveled, put in for the travel. I paid to get in there, right, Madam Clerk? And you, Anthony, I talked to you about it to see if they cover, and you said, yeah. And it's very educational. And I think councillor Amy Green went, and she found it very educational. I can't speak for her, but I found it very educational and helped me a lot and a lot of different things I think. I learned about the roads, I learned about the MS4, I learned about trash, and everything else. It's really, ask Ms., you learned a lot. We used to walk around at different things and ask all kinds of questions. And we even found out how to get different grants. So really, you're going to take that away where you can benefit the city? I think you're making a big mistake. And you tell me that if you want to pay for yourself, you're not going to go. You're not going to go. Come on. You're not going to go. If you don't go now, you're not going. So which caught joking around with the public here and say it? We're not going to go. So that's how I feel, and I'm not going to support it.
Counselor Janice Haly.
I've never gone, and I'm proud to say I've never gone. Not because I don't want to be educated, because when you get right down to it, it's not going to make a hell of a difference what happens in the city because I can't effectuate a $3.5 million increase in health insurance. Oh, great, let's learn what Lexington's doing. Last I checked, we're not Lexington. I don't care what they're doing. I care about this city. And about grant opportunities, we pay people to do that. I'm going to go to a meeting, learn about grants, and I'm going to go, hey, apply for this grant. Sure! It's just for this, if you ask me. It's never been needed before, and it's not needed now. We've had many effective, I will go out on a limb and say, you are all effective councillors, not because you go to the MMA meetings, because you pick up the phone when your constituent calls you when they have a problem with their tree or their berm. That's how you get the votes. No constituents ever said to me, you know, I don't know about you next year because you didn't go to that MMA meeting. I didn't see you taking the pictures of yourself at the, on your page. They don't care. So, you know, I'm sorry, those who don't go, it's not that they don't want to be educated. We're all educated because we know Pittsburgh. We know the hardships that we face, okay? I've gone to other community meetings outside of Pittsburgh without paying, without asking for reimbursement, okay? So, I mean, I want to play it fair here. If I'm not going to cut my pay, I'm certainly not going to keep this intact. So I just, there's all this stuff said about the importance of these things. When you get right down to the brass tacks, none of it makes a damn worth a difference. Because you could have gone to 15 MMA meetings. Did anyone at the MMA conference know that health insurance is going up by 75% in one year, that the rate of increase? No. So what would me, I'm not docking anybody for going to them. I'm just saying, let's not make it out to be to the public like, if we don't go, we're not going to be effective at our jobs. It's bunk. Thank you.
Counselor Fleming.
Yeah, I believe in last year's budget, we kept this in. And you can correct me if I'm mistaken. I believe it was for the dinner with the other city council, for the other cities. And I had voted to take it out anyways because it was my feeling that if you really wanted to attend that, you would buy your own ticket. So I am going to vote to eliminate this.
Counselor Green.
Maybe just a point of clarification. If there, and maybe this is to Ms. Cronin, if there were councillors that wanted to attend an MMA meeting without this line item, is that something that could be reimbursable? Or does it, is there money in that account as of today that if we had expenses now through June 30th, would we have money to cover those expenses?
I really, I don't have the budget in mind to say what's remaining in that account. And I don't know if there's an MMA meeting coming up or if this is for next year.
It would be for next year.
Yeah. So, and you could not encumber this money for next year? If you don't use it in this year, it's gone. Whatever's left in the state of Washington. It turns back to me.
Is there an ability that if councillors incurred an expense and wanted reimbursement for it, that was a legitimate reimbursement? Is there a means to do that without this line item in place?
No, that, it would come from here.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I sincerely appreciate my colleagues' dedication to tighten our belt and cut the budget any way they can. Personally, and I'm not going to speak to, you know, anyone else's commitments or how they feel, but for me personally, you know, education is a lifelong endeavor. And we should always be learning and taking opportunities we can to do so. And as someone with great respect to the gentleman from Mountain Road and his experience in 17 years, I was pretty much fresh when I started with politics. I didn't know a damn thing. And going to those MMA meetings really helped me. And being in those Zoom conferences sincerely helped me. And so I'd never, I wouldn't want to take an opportunity away from my fellow councillors to learn or to educate themselves or to get up to speed or to hear from the wisdom of individuals like the gentleman from Mountain Road who have had that experience and who go to these conferences and speak on topics that maybe I'm not considering in a certain way or maybe I'm not getting the best that I can for the constituents that I serve and being the best councillor that I can be. So my personal experience was the MMA and the education travels was very beneficial to me. Thank you.
I've got you, Counselor. I'd just like to note that I also came into this job entirely green back in, no offense, back in 2018. I came into this knowing practically nothing about how to do the job. It's kind of like the legal practice in that way, you know? You can learn as much as you want in law school about how to read the law. They don't teach you how to run a law. They don't teach you how to run a law practice. And I learned what I learned from my colleagues, from department heads, and honestly, from making mistakes that people called me on, and, you know, then I didn't make them again. You know, our, one of the reasons I have such great affection for our recently passed colleague, Joel Caddy, is because he sat next to me in my first term, and he walked me through everything. You know, when I had no clue what I was doing, he'd lean over and press the button and say, this is what we're doing now, or, you know, this is how this runs. Or we'd talk after the meeting, and I'd talk to President Kusmerik, who's now Rep. Kusmerik, and he'd say, yeah, this is how this runs. You know, I think like most of us, I learned most of what I know about city council budgets from Counselor Janice Holly. It's not in doubt to me that there is a benefit to formal programs of education. But I do concur with Counselor Janice Holly that the vast majority of what is presented by statewide organizations is not exceptionally germane, and I know because I've looked at the programs and so forth, even though I haven't attended, is not exceptionally germane to what happens in Pittsburgh. It's broad, it's general, and there may be good ideas, but it's sifting, sifting the wheat from the chaff. And I think my time, speaking for myself at least, has been better spent attending events in our surrounding communities where some organization says, hey, we're giving a seminar on such and such issue that is specifically of interest to your city. Would you like to attend? So, you know, I don't doubt that many of my colleagues have received benefit from going to these conferences. I don't think that it's necessary going forward, though, nor that it's the only way that this experience could have been gained, which is not to say it's an invalid way to have gained that experience. I think it could have been gained in other ways and could be going forward, particularly whereas now we don't have any rookie councilors at the moment. You know, if that were to be a situation again, maybe we could ask the mayor to put forward an appropriation for a few hundred dollars for one counselor to go and be educated on these topics. The same goes for when it's our turn to host the Tri-City Dinner. I wouldn't want to see that go away. I think it's important for us to network with our colleagues in our surrounding communities and learn from them. But if that comes out of this line item, I would think that when it's our year to host, we could just have an appropriation for that, for however much it costs to host the dinner. And when it comes to just the attendance, we do have an additional $3,000 in our salaries, and I agree with Counselor Kuchar. That's what our salaries are for. We're not being paid this because it's a full-time job or even a part-time job at that salary. We're being paid that $13,000 basically to cover our out-of-pocket expenses that we incurred doing this job because we all go well beyond what is formally required of us by our charter. We all go well beyond sitting here on Tuesday nights and taking our votes. Motion to approve the second. I have a motion and second.
On the motion.
On the motion? Counselor Boishman. Well, I did have Counselor Janice Holly waiting, so if his is also on the motion, then he'll go first.
Okay, wait me. I got no problem.
There was a question asked her about what we've spent. We've spent $855, $855 this fiscal year. That, there's the question. And the only other thing I'll say is, we've all been green at some point. I was green too at one point. I learned, not by going to MMA meetings, but I learned from the Tom Donnellys, the Tom Conrys, the Norman Boyveres. That's how you learn. If the real concern is learning, you learn through your constituents, you learn through your fellow colleagues. Your constituents will tell you how they want you to do your job. They're not concerned with whether you're going to get educated at some formal institution for a day. That's how you learn. That's how it's always been. And those gentlemen that were referenced earlier that we all have high esteem for, they didn't do this stuff. They didn't have a fund. How did they survive? So let's not, let's be honest with the public. We will not be ineffective at our jobs if we don't have this account. Because I personally have faith in every one of you that you'll pull through.
Counselor Roishman on the motion.
Well, he makes me laugh, really. Let me explain something to you, and I'll say it to the public. Nobody knew that our insurance was going to go up 20%. Nobody. Even the homeowner's insurance was laid a haircut, and I didn't know about it. So when you say we should have known in MMA.
Counselor, I don't think anyone was saying that we should have known.
Well, I'm just saying, you used the example, the insurance going up 20%. And I'm saying to you, nobody knew it.
Counselor, no one was claiming that MMA should have known.
In regards to some of the councils in the past, I was told, and I have good friends with Mr. Councilor Donley, he did get paid reimbursed a lot of the times anyway. And I'll go step, one step closer. He said, and I'll say it again, it's very educational, and it helps you to understand a lot better when they're trying to make something pass and tell us about it, where you understand it. I knew nothing about, and I'll give you a prime example. I knew nothing about private streets. I mean, Nick could tell me all he wants about private street, but I went to a seminar and they explained it, why we can't pay by private street. It was very good, the way they explained it was very understandable. And different other programs, I'm telling you, we're making a big mistake. I'm not saying if you're going to be educated, you're not going to be educated, and it's not going to make you any smarter. It helps people like me that want to get better. It helps us. If you don't want to go, don't use it. And the money goes back to the budget. Simple as that. It goes back to the budget. He just said it. They spent $900. So everything else went back to the budget. So what are you worrying about? It didn't go in my pocket.
All right. Do we have anyone else on the motion? All right. All in favor of cutting $3,000 from city council education and travel? In opposition? Three in opposition passes by eight to three. I do just want to note, before we move on to the next item, I try, sorry?
Seven to three, Sally's not here.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I forgot that she needed to step out. Seven to three, passes by seven to three. So I didn't want to have anyone feel like I was changing the rules in the middle of a debate. But moving on to the next items, I'm going, just in the interest of time, I'm going to have to start being strict about any repetitious comments. And I'm as guilty of it as anyone. Call me out on it if I start doing it. I'm going to have to be strict about repetitious comments just because I want everyone to be able to have their say. But we do need to move along. So, go ahead, Counselor.
When you say repetitious comments, is that by an individual counselor?
By an individual counselor or if one counselor is simply directly reiterating everything that was already said rather than saying, I concur in what so-and-so said. And again, I'm guilty of it too, but we can't have 11 people saying the same thing 11 different ways and manage to get out of here by midnight, so.
Well, I think it's important for the public to know how the councilors feel.
Certainly, which is why it would be perfectly, perfectly appropriate for a counselor to say, I'd just like to second everything that so-and-so said or everything that so-and-so said except, you know, that, just so long as we keep moving along briskly. Counselor Janice Holly, I see you have a cut to the city clerk's salary. I noticed you had cuts to multiple department head salaries. Is that intended as sort of a package?
Yes, there's 13 cuts on my list that all apply to this one. So whatever my rationale for this one is, apply to the other 12.
All right, so we can take those all at once.
Yeah, so the ones that are in the same category as this, the city clerk, and again, maybe you should use the other page, the other page where it's by counselor. So it would be the city clerk, human resources director, administrative assistant, HR generalist, human resource assistant, chief assessor, auditor, deputy auditor, chief procurement officer, community development director, police chief, public works commissioner, board of health director, and chief librarian. Now, there's a couple other department heads on my list that aren't in that package for different reasons.
I've got those marked down.
Those 13 I just listed are all the same as this one we're going to take up. And I will begin by saying that that's probably the majority of the reason why people are in the audience, because it affects their pay. We have a matrix in our ordinance that we unanimously voted for, except Counselor Walsh wasn't here. The former counselor, the mayor, she voted for this. We all voted for this three-year wage increase. I see Sam shaking his head. In the initial council finance committee and the full council, we voted unanimously. I'm not counting the budget vote, all right? It was a 3% raise in FY '24, '23, '24, and '25 for these positions. These positions fall in the matrix. They're non-union, governed by us basically, because we control the ordinance. So these positions got a 3% increase in FY '23, they got a 3% increase in FY '24, and they're due a 3% increase this year, which is what all these numbers reflect. I got the ordinance, the matrix from the auditor. I understand at the end of the package, there's an ordinance change for that same matrix because some of the positions are getting less. So I made an effort to exclude those. So these 13 are getting the 3%. And I would just say that when we took the votes last year, you know, if you look at the history of these salaries, they have gone up considerably each year. Even though we voted last year for three years, well, things have changed, okay? And I don't want to hear this, well, you know, it's not fair because we're not in a union, then join a union. That's the cold-hearted nature I have of being in the private sector for 25 years. I mean, what I'm saying is, is we have to reduce the rate of growth anywhere we can. And I thought it was a good compromise to make it 1.5%, not 3. So they're still getting an increase. It's not as much as we initially promised or voted for. There were some councilors last year during the budget session who got ahead of me on this, who wanted to do this at that time. I didn't support it. Most of us didn't. But we also didn't know in hindsight that we'd be in the position we're in right now because of health insurance primarily. So in any private or public entity, when you know that things are going to get rough, especially in the private sector, the private sector does not give you the same, or they don't give you a raise at all or give you the same raise you got before the company wasn't doing well. I know this from personal experience with my private sector company. We're not doing well right now. We were told last year we would all get 3.5%. Well, I got an email two weeks ago, you're now getting 1. I have no say. Why are we getting 1? Because our bottom line's taking a hit. Well, the Pittsburgh's bottom line is taking a hit. And so the people I'm referencing, they got 3, they got 3, and they're going to get 1.5. I could be a real stickler and say, I'm freezing it, but I'm not going to do that because I want to give them something because we made that promise last year, at least I did. So these 13 reductions are not a reflection of anybody's job performance. I got to say this every year, you know, not a reflection of job performance, not because I don't like these people. It's because of where we are right now, and I'm trying to meet people halfway and say, instead of 3, you're getting 1.5. And if I read some of the salaries, for one year, I mean, we talked about this last year. I even said it, that the next union negotiations, the non-union, playtime's over. No more 3% now, but we're really in a hole now. So my proposal is to amend, understanding this is ordinance-driven, I will file an ordinance tomorrow if these pass, to change these by 50% down, okay? And that's it. You're still getting an increase, you're not getting much, because we're not in a good year. It's no different than anywhere else that people work. And I'm sure a large majority of my constituents will agree with this methodology because most of them don't work for the public sector, and they get cut if their company's not doing well. And this isn't a cut, it's a reduction in the increase. Let's be clear on that. I hate that word, "cut." It's not a cut. These are cuts technically because we said 3, now it's 1.5. They're still getting an increase of 1.5. They're getting something. And so that was my compromise. And that's my rationale. And I know no one in the audience likes it. What can I say? I didn't ask for health insurance to go up 20%. Thank you.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes, hi. So you don't see my name on this? I also had a list with almost exactly these same cuts, and so to save being repetitive, I'm going to say I echo everything Counselor Janice Holly says, and the alternative to not taking the cut is possible layoffs next year. And we want to avoid that as much as possible. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
My question, two questions. Number one, if he can read off the cuts that he really proposed on this, that's number one, before he does start reading it. Number two, is this going to be a COLA cut, the one we voted on, the 3% COLA raise? Because I get this all confused. COLA? Or is this one, if they get a stipend, a step increase every other year?
I don't believe this is a step increases.
Is it the COLA?
Because this matrix I have is 3% each of those years.
We have Director Davis here, if she's allowed. Yes. Would you like to come up to the microphone just so we can have this clarified?
Yeah, I'm just curious. It looks to me by these cuts, well, let me ask a question. What was your methodology for doing this? You took the 3% and divided it in half?
The rates that I were given from the auditor of the matrix that goes into these raises, if you take the weekly rate from FY '24 and then FY '25, the difference in every one of them is 3% increase. And I'm proposing it be half that.
It is, but there are people that will be, that are due for that step increase. So it is. It's not everybody. Everybody's on a different schedule.
So whether it's a step or a COLA, I'm looking at the matrix. It says you're making this per week in FY '24, and you're making this per week in FY '25, and I'm having it. I don't care if it's a step or a COLA, because we control the matrix, that's an ordinance, and I'll put it in tomorrow to cut those rates in half.
Counselor, you were answering the question, that's fine, but you don't actually have the floor.
I think it's irrelevant. It's what the matrix says.
All right.
Counselor President, is there, could you repeat the 13 positions?
Sure, I'll read those off. I know Counselor Boishman had asked for that too. That's, hmm? Counselor Janice Holly did say there were a few of them that were on a different rationale and will be addressed separately. So the 13 that are being targeted in this particular cut, I'm sorry, I don't mean targeted in any negative way, just, the 13 that are on the block in this cut are the city clerk, human resources director, admin assistant/HR generalist, human resources assistant, chief assessor, auditor, deputy auditor, chief procurement officer, community development director, police chief, public works commissioner, board of health director, and chief librarian.
Mr. President, I have the answer right here, the matrix I got from the auditor. It says right at the top, these all represent grades and steps total. The numbers reflected are grade and step-based. The numbers reflected are grade and step-based.
Uh, right, but COLA and steps and grades are separate.
Well, it, it says at the top.
So if it includes grade and step, COLA is separate from either of those.
Correct. This, this says, the matrix somewhere, it says grade dash step, weekly rate.
Yep, okay.
So the, the reduction in half is the grade and step combined.
And COLA.
Not COLA.
Because.
It's not listed here.
No, but it is included, well, okay, hang on, let's, let's go to the.
Sorry. So what happens is, you get a step increase every other year. That's going to also include a COLA.
Okay.
So if you're looking at somebody, I'll put myself on there, um, mine is 3889. If you divided that in half, that's what, 77-something? That's because I'm due for a step increase.
Understood.
As opposed to others that are lower, you know, for instance, my, uh, well, no, she's, she's due for a step as well. Um, so somebody that does it a, a lower amount, like a deputy auditor, that's, that's just the COLA.
Yep. Can I just say one thing about the math, the, where I came up with the math?
Quick, yeah, briefly, because I have to get back to other counselors.
For example, not to pick on the police chief, but he's the first one on the list. And I don't know if you folks have this, I got it directly from the au, I just asked, because I, um, it says here FY '24, grade step, 16-10, weekly rate, $4,206. FY '25, grade and step are the same, 16-10, weekly rate, 400, $4,333. So the difference between the two is $127 per week. That's the 3%. So I'm saying, take that 127 a week and have it.
Understood.
So that's what all these represent.
So Counselor Boishman, uh, did you have further questions or comments?
I just, I don't mind, I don't mind what he's doing, but I don't want to take their, their guarantee that I voted on, because I don't feel right. I told you that before, a, their step increase away. I don't want to do that. Uh, that, I, I don't feel comfortable in doing that. I don't think it's fair to me. I'll take, I'll go halves on the COLA, the COLA part of it, because if you add the COLA and the step increase, that's 6%, right? Am I right or wrong? I'll use you, you use you, I'll use you. 4%, you get it every year.
If there's 3%, then yes. If there's a, a, a 3% COLA, and there's 3% between those two steps, then yes, it is, it affects 6%.
Okay, um, is that?
Well, I'm still confused. I'll be quite frank, I'm not gonna lie, I'm confused. If you say just the 3% on COLA, yeah.
So it, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor.
Forget the 3%.
Right, so cor, so you're, basically what you did in fa, in calculating your numbers, it ultimately.
Yes.
Irrespective of the 3%, the COLA, the steps, was take the delta year over year, cut it in half?
Correct. Or I just looked at what the increase was for these non-union positions, and I divided it by two. If that's the simplest I can make it. Whatever they were gonna get, they get in half, if we pass it. I don't want to confuse the matter, but I used, the basis of my numbers was off this matrix sheet that I have for those positions, but then I said, "Well, I might be missing some things, so whatever the increase is, divide by two." I don't care if it's a COLA step, hitting the lottery, I don't care. Half. If you're getting $10,000, I want them to get 5. To me, it's a compromise. So I could be a real jerk and say nothing.
Okay, 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 okay.
One real quick thing, in order to be uniform, the same exact thing would have, have to happen next year.
Mm-hmm, right, to, so that everyone, so that no one is penalized just by the fact that this happens to be their step year.
Right, because, exactly.
Um, so, okay, so does that clarify it for you, Counselor Boishman?
No.
Someone who, basically, someone who is getting a step increase this year will wind up getting, under Counselor De Natale's proposal, a, a net 3%. Because they'll get ha, they would've gotten 6, they'll get 3.
I'd like to have the city auditor.
Someone who, uh, go ahead.
So the purpose of the matrix is also to define a rate. So if we just say we're going to take the delta and cut it in half, we've created like a whole array of new rates, and pretty much implodes the matrix. There really isn't a matrix anymore. So I, I'm not sure, I think the way, if you want to do a uniform change, then you just, you redesign a matrix that has a 1.5% COLA. That, because the COLA's applied to the entire matrix, to every, every grade and step in there. So if you're taking, if someone's due a step this year, and you're cutting that in half, that, they're not on a step anymore. They're in between a step, so it kind of implodes that logic.
Right, right.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so.
I understand that, and I just told you, that I don't want to take their step away.
Right.
I, I don't want to say he's getting an $8,000 raise, and we cut that half, there's $4,000, and they lose $4,000, because they don't get $4,000. We, we ju, we just gave them an $8,000 raise, they only get $4,000 on a step, what a cost of living. I don't want to take this step. You're cutting a step behind, so if you, if she gets $7,500, you cut that in half, you're taking more money away from them. It's not fair. I don't think it's fair to me.
Mm-hmm.
And I want, it's not that, we, we can afford it, but it's not fair. They want just as hard as everybody else. You know, I, I just don't think it's right. I don't think I should sit here and tell them, "Join a union." Here we are, we're fighting about the union. I'm not saying you did, Marcus, don't get me wrong, excuse me for saying the way I said it. No, I don't think it's right, if, we should use, we should use, uh, HR. She's the one that put herself on the carpet, that wasn't going to mention her name. She, she got 4%. She, with her step increase, you get 7% with the step increase. You get the four, uh, you get the 3, I mean, 6, 6, 6. I'll cut the, the, the 3% and she'll get 4.5%. That I, I, I'll buy by that. They get their raise, they guaranteed, and we're just taking the CO, CO, COLA away. Just a plain COLA.
Mm-hmm. So just, just as a note, if in fact the council were to wish to do something like that, it would require, to my understanding, a fairly significant amount of recalculation of these cut amounts. There would be no easy way here in council tonight to ascertain exactly what those dollar figures would be if we wanted to, if we did decide that we wanted to cut the COLA in half but do nothing to the steps. Uh, we'd have to recalculate the whole thing. So, uh, Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll do my absolute best not to make this more confusing.
It's no one's fault, it's a confusing topic.
So I, I, I appreciate, uh, the gentleman from Allen Road, that he brought this before us, because, and I, I appreciate that he mentioned, um, that there were two, two of us, myself and Counselor, uh, the Counselor gentleman from Ward 4, who tried to do this in the last budget cycle, and we were unable to, uh, due the fact that we would take an ordinance, an ordinance change, and significant amount of recalculation has been said. But I do, what I can see, and simplify it as best as I can, is what I see in all of the numbers in the COLA and the step increases and everything, is that we set up a matrix, a system, that doesn't take into account what we're taking in, and it handcuffs us into making a, a year-by-year decision based on the revenues we're bringing in, right? Prop of 2.5, only, we can only bring in so much legally, by state law, by general law. And this doesn't take into account that, to me, doesn't take that into account, and it handcuffs us. And, and 100%, there's not a counselor here, and I don't like to speak for everyone who thinks that anyone out there's not doing a great job, and who doesn't deserve the salaries or, or raises. But we can't do things in the city that aren't sustainable. And to me here, as confusing as it is, the math with everything is not sustainable. So, Ms., uh, De Natale, if you'd like to put that ordinance tomorrow, I'd be happy to co-sponsor. I yield the floor, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ren Hasinga?
Uh, thank you. I just want to reiterate that what the auditor said, if we want to make changes to these non-union employees, we, it has to be consistent with the matrix. And how these cuts have been calculated are not consistent, because they, they mess with the steps in addition to COLA. And I just want to give a quick example for this. So the city clerk were on this item. It's scheduled to be on, um, step, grade 13, step 7. Last year, last fiscal year, it was 1950 per pay period, and it's scheduled to go up to 2009 under a 3% raise. If you wanted to lower the increase to 1.5%, it would go to 1979. What's in, uh, the counselor's cut is to 1949, which is $3 less, so things don't, don't line up. My other concern is there has to be consistency, because if you change the COLA, it has to apply to the entire matrix, not some employees versus others. And not all employees are included in these cuts. And for example, we have two employees that are on the same grade and step, the Director of Public Health and Deputy Commissioner of Water. They're both on grade 13, step 15. One has a, a cut proposed, which lowers their rate to 2579, the other does not, so their rate stays at 2622. And you can't have one grade and step that has different pays for two different employees, it's not manageable. So the way these are proposed are unworkable without, like the auditor said, completely blowing up our matrix and figuring out something new, and, and, I don't know, doubling the numbers, grades and steps, or making it completely unmanageable. So I, I think that is a, a big problem with how these cuts are being presented.
Thank you. Counselor, I got you, uh, for the second time, just give me a sec. So I'd just like to note that, for me, yes, yes, we're in a budget crunch. Yes, we want to make sure everything's sustainable, and maybe there's even a discussion to be had down the road about how we set up our matrices going forward, how we enter into contracts going forward, you know, that, those are discussions that, as counselors, it would be entirely proper for us to inquire into. But for right now, there are, to me, exactly two primary concerns here. There, honestly, there are potential legal ramifications, too, but I don't even, I'm not even thinking about those. Mark it on your calendar. The two key items for me here are, one, as has been said by a few different counselors, this is what we promised. Yes, in the private sector, yes, sometimes promised raises or promised, uh, COLAs or whatever, do get cut or eliminated in bad budget years. That doesn't necessarily mean it's something to emulate. Um, you know, I, I've never been an employer, but looking at the family business, I know we've always done everything we possibly can to, to keep promises to employees in good years, in bad years, in every year. And the other thing is, yes, I, I do think it's a bit unfair to go after these specific positions because they don't happen to have a union contract. Um, it's, I get that, you know, we look, politics is the art of the possible, you look at what you can do, but that doesn't seem to me to be a good principle distinction between these positions and others that we're not cutting because we can't cut them. Um, it, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense, uh, to say, you know, you're, you're working for the city on the basis of essentially a, a promise rather than a written, uh, termed-out contract, uh, and so you're the ones we're gonna, uh, cut when we, when we need somewhere to cut. That doesn't seem right to me. Uh, and I don't attribute any negative motive, any malice, any, any of that, to any of my colleagues who may be in favor of this. Uh, but for me, I would not feel right, uh, making a distinction on that basis. I have Counselor De Natale, but, uh, in keeping with our rules, I'll go to the people who haven't spoken yet on this topic. Counselor Kuchar?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. These are hard cuts. I'm not gonna say, "Yeah, we promised 3%."
Yep.
We're get, you're getting 1.5. But let's face it, some of these, the, the salaries that we would be, you know, not, I'm not gonna say cut, but not giving as much as we originally thought, nobody's gonna be eating ramen noodle as a result of it, okay? Now, what worry, what worries me is if we don't make these cuts, the rookie, the rookie, uh, new recruit police officer that's just on the beat, that his position might have to be cut because we just don't have the money, his kids will be eating ramen noodle. You know, so we have to think about that. You know, these, they're still getting an increase. A bet, yes, I understand, it's not as much as we, we hoped, it's not as much as we thought, but we do have to tighten the belt. And I don't, I, I, whatever we have to do, if we have to do an ordinance, or, you know, change the matrix, then we should do it. Because we are in a, we are in a tough year, and we need, we need to do something. And it's not like we're just saying, "No, you're not getting anything." You're still, they're still getting an increase. I, I, I appreciate this cut, and I think of these cuts, and I think I'm gonna, I think I'll vote for them. Okay?
Uh, Counselor Schultz?
I know we're in a budget crunch. I, uh, I proposed, uh, cutting the counselor's salary, and also, the, the only cuts I had were the counselor's salary and the mayor's salary. But at the same time, as Counselor Zarela, Counselor President Zarela said, I don't feel right about cutting things that have been promised, that we passed. And I, I know we're in a budget crunch, but I can't, I can't support it, and I, I appreciate what Counselor De Natale's trying to do. He's trying to help us with the budget for not only this year, but the future as well. But I just can't, uh, support it, because like Counselor President Zarela, we're, we're targeting, uh, non-union employees just because we can. And I, I don't agree with that. I just, uh, I think that also, uh, looking at, uh, the HR Director Susan Davis, you know, two of her employees are, are, are on this list, and, uh, I've, I've been in the position where I've had employees, and it's gonna be a big hit on morale as well, if they would promise this raise, and, you know, we're, we're saying, "Well, we're gonna pull the rug, rug out from under you, we're not gonna give you this raise, because we got this budget crunch." I think there's other savings we, we have in the budget besides, uh, uh, cutting pay for, for people that are promised their, their pay cut. So I, I won't be supporting this. Thank you, I yield the floor.
Counselor Walsh?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, I guess the thing that, I, I realize we're in a, in a tough budget year, and, and if we were going to, if we were able to look at these cuts and cut simply the cost of living, that would be one thing. But we're not making the same cuts for the, for, across the board. We're cutting some steps, we're cutting some, you know, it, we're cutting different things for, for different people, and I, I just don't think that that's fair. I think if you could single out the cost of living and, and cut that, then, you know, that would be fine. But we're not doing that. We're, we're cutting out somebody who is, who has worked toward, um, reaching that certain step in their position, they've worked that amount of time, they've, they've achieved that level of expertise, and, and I think at this point, by pulling that away from them, I, I think that that's unfair. So I won't be supporting this.
Counselor De Natale?
My calculation was a rough calculation, but I can guarantee you, it can be fixed really quickly, because, what day is today? May 30th? Last I checked, we got four weeks until this budget has to become law. The City of Leominster hasn't even gotten their budget yet.
Yes, we did.
You know, so I, I hear people saying my calculations are wrong. Well, sorry. I mean, what's the COLA in this matrix that I'm looking at, that I was getting, given from the auditor? What's the COLA from that? Just tell me. I'll do the calculation right now. What's the COLA?
Counselor, we're not going to edit all of these cuts here in, in the meeting. That's, we don't have the time for that.
Well, I got news for everybody. As I said earlier, playtime's over after this one. Period. All right? And I'm sure, I'm sure the unions are aware of that, too. All right? Because we, we've gone through this.
Counselor, cuts to the unions and union negotiations are not what we're discussing at the moment.
Well, others have brought up the fact that I'm picking on the non-union. I'm not picking on them, that's under my jurisdiction, not the union. That's under the mayor's jurisdiction, okay? We set a wage matrix based on what we believed at the time was affordable, and now it's Is it fair in the private sector? I never understood that argument, okay? Like I told you, I was told two weeks ago, "Tough noogies." All right? I didn't lose my job, and for the life of me, it's not a cut, it's a reduction and increase, all right? So if my calculations are off, I'm guilty. But I think everyone knows the avenue I'm trying to go here. And some of my colleagues last- And some of my colleagues last year were hell-bent on this happening. And I don't hear them supporting me in this endeavor. Who cares if the number's wrong? You know where I'm trying to go with this. But we're not being fair. Because it's all about fairness. I don't care about fair. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I believe you had something to add?
Yes, Susan, aren't, weren't we discussing that some of these particular line items are in the union?
Yes. On this, yes.
On the proposed cuts?
There are.
Out of the 13 that we're currently discussing, just to make sure we've got everything separated out.
Why are they in the union? I am sorry, because I, when you were saying that.
I'll read them off again. City Clerk.
No.
You. Admin Assistant, HR Generalist, Human Resources Assistant, Chief Assessor, Auditor, Deputy Auditor, Chief Procurement Officer, Community Development Director, Police Chief, Public Works Commissioner, Board of Health Director, and Chief Librarian.
Those are all non-union. There are some union positions that are listed on here.
Yeah, we'll get to those.
But, no, the ones that you write off are all non-union.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Was that it, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I sincerely appreciate the sentiment that, you know, we've made promises and we can keep them. It's true. It's true. But we set up a system in which the promise has been made as soon as someone signs up, as soon as someone is an employee. So at one point or another, and I hear a good deal of, you know, we do need to take a look at this, you know, not tonight, but down the road, if the matrix is correct, if it's sustainable, whatever the math ends up being, whatever the details end up being, at some point, when we make that change, the promise is taken back by everyone who was hired. So as difficult and as challenging as that is, you know, ultimately, we have a responsibility to make the best decisions for the city as a whole. And that is hard, and that is challenging, but that's how, what I feel like I am here to do. So although this doesn't sound like it's gonna pass tonight, it's something that we generally need to take a look at and determine if we are making the wrong decision for the direction of the city as a whole. I don't think that the promise is broken. I think that's the promise I initially made when I ran for this, which was to do what was right for the city, even when that was hard, even when, you know, you may be not gonna make friends. But ultimately, this is something we need to take a look at. And it sounds like that's kind of in agreement here tonight. So I'm gonna make a motion now, if no one else would like to speak, to accept the bundle of proposed cuts.
I'd just like to say a brief word, which is, yes, I agree. I think the difference between looking at it in terms of retooling the matrix down the road versus taking it tonight is that if we look at it as an ordinance issue down the road, we can set a later effective date. We can tell people, look, starting on, starting next year, you know, we're going to tighten our belts and trim the matrix down, or whatever. And people can plan for that. They can choose, if they need to, to seek other employment. They can choose to budget their own finances differently to account for it. And they can choose whether or not to take a position offered, knowing that that's coming down the road. Whereas I feel like if we do it tonight, it's very abrupt. It's, everyone's made their decisions, made their plans, and we would be, as has been said on a few occasions, pulling the rug out from under them and saying, nope, you're not getting what you thought you were getting. Rethink your whole strategy here. And so.
I'm gonna second the motion.
So I have a motion and a second. I see Madam Mayor would like to make a comment. That is up to the maker of the motion.
I rescind my motion.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you, President Zarella. So I have, I prepared a statement that I was, I was, I was under the impression that we would be able to respond to the cuts, Department Heads and the Mayor.
Certainly.
So I have a statement prepared that I'd like to address, kind of the cuts in general, and particularly, you know, the cuts to our existing staff obligations. So if I may read that?
If there is, you know, if, it's gonna get read at one point or another before I ask if there's any objection. So if there is no objection, we'll take it now.
Thank you. Honorable Members of the City Council, I am here before you today with a deep sense of responsibility and urgency. Over the past five months, our finance team, Department Heads, and I have worked diligently to deliver a balanced budget for fiscal year '25. This effort was marked by our commitment to transparency and accountability as we confronted the structural imbalances that have plagued our city's finances for the past couple years. Thank you for your due diligence in recognizing the improvements that we can make within our departments through this budget process. However, it is imperative that we consider the broader implications of the proposed cuts. The balanced budget that we have presented is not just a set of numbers. It is a carefully crafted plan that allows us to continue our city's forward momentum and allows us time to address efficiencies to be made and development to continue, while maintaining essential services and honoring our commitments to staff, contracts, and the community. The City of Pittsburgh's reputation depends on our ability to honor our obligations and respect those trusted individuals who work diligently to restore our financial stability. We have made significant investments in our city's staff to attract and retain talented individuals who are committed to our city's future. A few years ago, we collectively worked to institute parity with our departmented salaries and compared their departments, compared to the department's staff that work within collective bargaining agreements. Prior to the ordinance wage matrix, there were situations where departmented salaries did not keep pace with their assistants or deputies within their department. Last year, the council and the mayor recognized the necessity of raising the mayor's salary after numerous deliberations to ensure that we attract capable and competent leadership and recognize the great responsibility the CEO of a $197 million budget has. Rescinding these commitments now undermine our credibility and signal that Pittsburgh does not honor its commitment to our staff and to the institution of mayor. I know from my experience here, the mayor's office, including the Chief of Staff and Deputy Chief of Staff, work relentlessly for this city in numerous capacities, often exceeding 60 to 70-hour work weeks. We have addressed budget shortfalls head-on and worked to provide a balanced FY '25 budget. However, the mayor's office needs to maintain its commitment to current staffing and to ensure current, continued functional operation of our city's responsibilities to continue this vital work. Consider the financial savings recognized by our administration in this short period of time of necessity. By taking on interim facilities management for city buildings, we have saved the city over $108,000 in cuts needed from our FY '25 budget. The former cost of Main Street's beautification has been at the expense of over $50,000, over $150,000, at $50,000 per year. By our office taking on this task, we have collaborated with local business and volunteers to provide this service at a fraction of the cost with no funds coming from the city budget through innovative solutions and community collaboration. Our Chief of Staff, who traditionally manages our annual Civic Days events, with our team collaboration, have blown past our fundraising goal of $50,000, allowing us to reduce dependency in our city budget by over $8,000. There are also numerous smaller solutions implemented that have been in the thousands saved from our city budget, including liability reductions through contract services to maintain safe access for our employees and the public to enter and exit City Hall, and reduce the need to pull DPW staff off the streets during snowstorms to clear the lots at City Hall. These are tangible results that demonstrate our commitment to fiscal responsibility and our ability to find creative solutions to address our current and future needs. Reducing staff in the mayor's office would impede our ability to perform these essential functions. It would force us to hire more employees or contract out services such as facilities maintenance and downtown beautification again, or management of Civic Days, or let our buildings fall into disrepair, have a less attractive in-town district, or forego Civic Days events, none of which is acceptable to our forward growth. We must continue to tackle efficiency and maintenance challenges head-on to save money in the long run and ensure Pittsburgh's infrastructure and fiscal sustainability remain sound. We are witnessing improvements every day, and momentum is building. I plead with you to work collaboratively with us and allow us time and resources to continue with this progress. We need to address our maintenance, facilities, dispatch, parking challenges, and more, and other efficiencies without compromising our ability to implement solutions. We must keep our team motivated and engaged, feeling supported by our city council. We are all on the same team, working towards a shared vision for Pittsburgh's future. Let us not reverse the progress that we have made. Let us stand firm and continue our collective commitment to economic growth and stability. We have faced challenges before, such as airport shortfalls, and by standing together and investing wisely, we have turned those challenges into growth opportunities, and we're now seeing positive investments. Now we must do the same with our broader budgetary issues. I urge you to support this city's forward growth and momentum in this budget. Together, we will continue to create an economically positive environment that benefits all residents of Pittsburgh. Now is not the time to turn back. Now is the time to stand together. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the bundle of cuts presented by Counselor Dean Talley.
Second.
So I have a motion and second to approve the package of budget cuts concerning Department Head salaries proposed by Counselor Genitali. Does anyone need me to read those off again? On the motion, Counselor Van Hesenda.
I just want to reiterate that if the intent is to control the rise in payroll costs for the city, I think that's a good one. But the cuts as proposed are unworkable with our matrix. It just, it's gonna cause chaos if this passes, just so everyone's aware. Thank you.
On the motion, Counselor Genitali.
Whatever we decide to do, the matrix will follow. That's what math is. You can make it work. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Boishman, on the motion.
I talked to, I touched to my fellow counselors today, and I told them I was gonna support them, but I wanna support them, but I don't want to cut somebody's pay. I don't, I don't think it's right that I take a step away. The COLA, half, yeah. But the step, no, so we're taking part of the step away, and I'm not, I don't think it's fair. I raised my hand in good faith to say, I wanna give him a raise, and I'm not gonna do that to him.
Mr. President, can I request a roll call vote on this one?
Certainly. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Walsh?
No.
President Zarella?
No.
Counselor Boishman?
No.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Craigin? Counselor Cruz?
No.
Counselor Dean Talley?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
No.
Counselor Schultz?
No.
Counselor Van Hesenda?
No.
Motion fails by a vote of three in favor and seven against. Before we move on, both because we've been going a while and because, for obvious reasons, the next set of proposals will occasion, I believe, a fair bit of debate, I would like to ask for a brief recess not to exceed five minutes. If everyone's back and ready before then, we'll get started before then. We are in recess. Next up, we have a number of cuts submitted for the salary of the mayor. I will make the same note that I did with the counselors' salaries, that if we were to decide to cut any of this, as Counselor Van Hesenda also noted, we would not be able to make any of this effective until the start of the next year at least. I've also spoken with the legal department and received an alternative opinion that we would not be able to do so until following the next election. So regardless, at least until January 1st. That said, the first up with the largest proposed cut is Counselor Schultz.
Thank you, Counsel President Zarella. I proposed this cut, I was, when it came about a couple, it's almost been two years, I was, I was opposed to the size of the raise at that time. I thought that, that 2% a year over 10 years would be sufficient, and I proposed the same thing for the council tonight. I just thought that the raise was too high, that we couldn't afford it, and as it turns out, it seems like we can at this point. I know the mayor, then Counselor Squallier, she was, she voted against it as well, and so did Counselor Cruz. The three of us voted against it. I know at the time, Counselor Squallier said that her proposal was $93,000, which was a $10,000 increase over, over what, over what the salary was at the time. So I really thought that it, you know, we needed to do it not all at once. And I realized that it was the first time, as Counselor Genitali said, in 10 years that we had proposed an increase, but I thought it was, was too much all at once, that we could have done it. And then we, as Counselor Dean Talley talked about, we talked about the Consumer Price Index, the CPI, CPIU at the time for urban consumers, that we would try to implement that so we would never have to do that again, either for the mayor or the city council. And I certainly am in favor of doing that and finding, hopefully, the legal department can find a way to do that, that the state had vetoed our proposal to do that. So I'm hoping that that'll happen. But I think, given our budget situation, I think that going forward, that we could, we could sustain this cut and also put into effect some, some sort of CPIU to not have to do this again with the, with the salary for the mayor and also for the city council. So I yield the floor.
Thank you. Just very briefly, before I go to Counselor Cruz, I just want to clarify, the state didn't directly tell us we couldn't do it. Rather, following that meeting, myself and the prior city solicitor sat down to figure out how to draft that ordinance, and in the course of our research, we discovered that the state was not, that the way the laws were worded, we were not going to be able to do that. If, certainly, if in consultation with our current legal team, it turns out that we were incorrect on that, that would be ideal, but I will address that down the road. Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. As the gentleman from Ward 1 said, I was also one of the three who voted against this increase to 120 when we discussed it previously. So my thought process was, was very much the same as it was before. I know others have changed their mind, but mine is very much the same. And I thought that would be a good, reasonable salary to attract worthy candidates. But in the interest of time and not repeating, I withdraw my motion. I yield the floor.
All right. And I'll, I'll, I would like to briefly make a note on what I put in, but then hold comment until I've gone to Counselor Fleming. I'll just note that my methodology for coming up with the number that I put in was that the proposal for the cut to the council's salary was a 33% rollback of the increase we voted, and the number I put in for the mayor's cut was equivalently a 30%, a 33% rollback of what we voted last year. I would like to address it further, but I would like to allow Counselor Fleming the opportunity to introduce her cut first.
Yes, I introduced mine the way I, although I didn't introduce it, I did back Marcus' cuts to cut the salary in half, because if I remember correctly, on that meeting on June 7, 2022, the mayor was quite adamant about not raising the mayor's salary to this level and voted against it. And I really believe she should lead by example and reduce her pay. Thank you.
Okay. To further introduce, or I suppose introduce will turn out to be the wrong word, but I will be withdrawing my cut proposal. will be withdrawing my cut proposal. I put it in largely because I thought there was an alternative methodology that should be considered, and we were coming down to the proposal deadline. Having thought about it further, I think there's certainly room to discuss, you know, what we ought to do going forward, but unlike us on the council, the mayoral salary, and this is irrespective of whoever may be in office, like I said back when we were voting on it initially, the mayoral salary is intended as essentially a person's sole full-time salary. As such, like was mentioned with the department heads, that goes towards personal finances, that goes towards personal expectations, and if we were to decide at some point that we made a misstep in increasing the mayor's salary, either at all or by that degree, it should not be handled in a precipitous abrupt manner, because whether it's Mayor Squallia or any other mayor, the mayor should have some certitude in their own personal They should not be, you know, suddenly having to rebudget at a number considerably lower than what they had anticipated for the year. So that is the reason I'm withdrawing my cut. I know that Alex Vera had wished to address this on behalf of the, I guess, executive department.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, as the chief of staff to Mayor Squallia, I'm here today to address the proposed budget cuts to the mayor's office. First and foremost, it's important to recognize the significant strides our administration has made in this challenging financial year. Despite the volatile economic conditions, we have delivered a balanced budget while implementing cost-saving measures that directly benefit the city and its residents. Since taking office, Mayor Squallia has been committed to fiscal responsibility and finding innovative ways to save the city money, and that these proposed cuts will not only undermine the progress we have made in a short time, but also severely impact the essential services we provide to the residents of Fitchburg. Allow me to outline the significant strides we have taken and why it is crucial to maintain the current funding for the mayor's office. Facilities director role. By taking over the vacant facilities director role, we have saved the city-
Alex? I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but at the moment, we're only on the mayor's salary. We will get to the staff salaries in just a moment. If this is a prepared statement that you only wish to read once at, you know, for all of these, then go ahead.
Can I clarify?
Sure, go ahead.
So as the mayoral salary is set by ordinance, that is a salary that must be taken. So if it were to be, if my salary were to be cut, that would be, you're really, you're not cutting line item.
Right.
You're cutting the personal services of the mayor's office.
If it-
So what that would do is reduce our, the staff, the two staff that we currently have for the city of Fitchburg and the mayor's office to be able to serve the city.
I was going to get to that part, but yes, anyway, go ahead.
Thank you. So by taking over the vacant facilities director role, we have saved the city $108,000. This proactive measure has allowed us to allocate these funds to other critical areas without compromising the quality of our facilities management. Cost-effective solutions, our hands-on approach to facilities issues has resulted in significant savings. By implementing on-the-spot solutions, we have avoided the high costs associated with contracted services, ensuring the taxpayer dollars are used efficiently. Civic Days festivities. We have significantly increased fundraising and reduced the city's budget for our annual civic days festivities, raising thousands more than in previous years, while enhancing community spirit, all without additional taxpayer burden. Community engagement and beautification. For the last three years, the city has allocated almost $150,000 from free cash for the flowers on Main Street. Recognizing our budgetary challenges, we worked with a local vendor, a community organization, and volunteers to plant flowers and maintain them ourselves, saving $45,000 this year alone. This not only beautifies our city, but also fosters a sense of community involvement and pride. In just the first three months of our administration, we uncovered and began addressing a significant issue that had been overlooked for over eight years. We found over 6,000 emails from constituents from the Contact Us form on the city's website that were going to a dead email address, depriving them of responses and solutions to their concerns. We have taken immediate steps to resolve this oversight by forwarding those email requests to the mayor's office. Our administration is dedicated to bridging the gaps between different departments that have existed for decades. We believe that true leadership comes from the top down, and we are actively working to foster better communication and collaboration across all city departments. This holistic approach is essential for efficient governance and improving the overall functionality of our city. The proposed cut to the mayor's salary, which was increased by this very council last year, poses a threat to the sustainability of these achievements. The mayor's salary is an obligation that the city council has made in sound judgment, acknowledging the role of mayor as the CEO of our city and as such is dictated by ordinance. The optics for cutting our third female mayor's salary, when the salary was increased last year with a male mayor in office, do not look good. Consequently, if the council votes to cut the mayor's salary, the reduction would need to come from the budget allocated to the mayor's staff. This action would have several detrimental effects. Reduced services to the public. Cutting staff would directly translate to a reduction in the services we provide to the public. Our ability to respond promptly and effectively to constituents' needs would be compromised. Decreased transparency. With fewer staff members, our capacity to maintain transparency and open communication with the public would diminish. This goes against our commitment to a transparent and accountable administration. Inadequate facilities management. Without the necessary staff, managing the city's facilities would become a challenge we cannot continue to do. This will lead to higher long-term costs due to deferred maintenance, which has always been a challenge here that we are trying to improve upon. Our long-term goal is to restructure facilities departments so it's more effective and efficient for the city. By cutting the mayor's office salaries, we would not be able to accomplish those goals. Loss of cost-saving initiatives. Our administration has demonstrated a strong commitment to implementing cost-saving initiatives that benefit the city financially while improving service quality. Reducing the budget for the mayor's office would severely impact our ability to continue these initiatives. In conclusion, the proposed budget cuts to the mayor's office would undermine the significant progress we have made and hinder our ability to serve the residents of Fitchburg effectively. I respectfully ask the city council to recognize the value of our administration's work, maintain a commitment to the collective agreement made, and the importance of maintaining a fully-staffed mayor's office. Our commitment to fiscal responsibility, innovative solutions, and bridging departmental gaps has already yielded substantial savings and improvements for our city. Let us continue this positive trajectory for the benefit of all residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Boeschman, sorry, yes, Counselor Boeschman. Before I go to Counselor Boeschman, I do just want to elaborate on what was raised. It is the opinion that has been communicated to me of both the legal department and the auditor's office, that though it has been our habit as a council to look at the budget in terms of individual line items, what we are essentially voting to approve at the end of the day is the categorical allocations, which, to my understanding, would essentially be the gray bars in our budget book. So for example, to use the city clerk's office as an example, because that's what I have on my page right here, city clerk personal services would be what we're actually allocating money to. The individual line items simply describe how that money is spent, not necessarily what we are voting. Now, I admit I have some further questions about that that will need to be addressed going forward, because it seems that though it is definitely not happening here, it seems that such an interpretation would at least potentially leave an opening for manipulation based on which, simply which category a line item is placed into. But again, I want to emphasize, I'm not saying I see that happening here. It's simply a concern I have with the interpretation. But as of right now, that seems to be the consensus among the experts, and I have no information to the contrary. So the net effect of that is, as the mayor noted, if we were to cut from, like technically, we cut $3,000 from city council expenses, education, and travel. Technically, we could still allocate the money in city council expenses to an education or travel use. We'd just have to pull it from one of the other items that we didn't cut. That's what I'm hearing. Attorney Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I'd like to offer a point of clarification if I could.
Certainly.
Particularly in the context in which this discussion is arising. So while I don't disagree with the summary you've just provided of how you've been advised and the general consensus in terms of what the council votes, it has been brought to attention as a consequence of this discussion relating to the mayor's salary, because the mayor's salary at present is dictated by city ordinance. And so we discussed it in an instance where if the council were not to accompany a budgetary amendment with an amendment to the ordinance, and you discussed that earlier tonight in the context of councillor salaries or stipends, you would pair it with an ordinance amendment. If there were to be an ordinance amendment that would reduce the salary of the mayor, then there'd be no issue, because your adoption of an amended budget would be reflecting not only the reduced salary for the mayor, but the remaining salaries in the mayor's office.
Right.
If you were to not adopt an ordinance change, it would be different, because then the mayor's office would have to decide how to still allocate the sufficient funds pursuant to the ordinance to the mayor's salary, which would mean there'd be less left over for the remaining salaries, which is what has prompted the discussion about cutting the resources of the office.
Gotcha. So just to make sure that I understand and that we all understand, if hypothetically there were a segment of the budget that does not involve anything that's set by ordinance, and we were to cut a specific line item, could funds still be allocated to the purpose that the line item was cut from, or, you know, as part of the general pool? Or would that then be binding because there is no ordinance in question saying that it has to be otherwise?
Right. So generally, in the absence of an ordinance, state law says that there's that flexibility, and it's meant to provide flexibility to municipalities, to give you the ability within the fiscal year to be able to adjust the monies within the department. And in fact, in some cities and in many towns, they will purposely vote a departmental or a functional segment budget to give them that flexibility within the fiscal year, as opposed to voting every line item in the budget, such that if you need to transfer money mid-year, you have to either go through the formal process with the finance committee, or you have to reconvene city council meeting or a town meeting. If I could add one other point, and I'll try and be as succinct as I can, but I think it's important because it relates to something that you said at the outset of this discussion, and it also relates back to the discussion that was had amongst the council when we considered the adjustments to the city councillors' stipends or salaries. So unlike department budgets, unlike the salaries of other city officials, the salaries of the mayor and the stipends or salaries of the councillors are determined by a specific section of your city charter, specifically Division 2, Section 17A. I know that the councillors know that, because there's been a couple of references by a few councillors to certain provisions that are in here. But when this was brought to our attention a couple of days ago that these were proposed, we were asked to take a look at it and determine, is there a path forward? What is that path? And most specifically, and importantly for tonight's meeting, when would these potential budgetary changes take effect? And so Section 17A says essentially three things, two of which I think are relatively straightforward, and the third of which is a bit more complicated. So it says, number one, that the mayor and the city council's salaries are determined by ordinance. We just discussed that, right? So ordinance changes are required in the event that you're going to alter those salaries. Number two, it says that no increase or reduction in the salaries of either the mayor or the city councillors shall take effect during the year in which the increase or reduction is voted. That seems simple enough. We can engage in an argument concerning whether we mean fiscal year or calendar year, but bottom line is during the year within which the vote occurs, there can't be an alteration in the salary, whether it be an increase or a decrease. The third provision of this particular section is where the confusion lies, I think, because it says, "No change in such salaries shall be made between the election of a new council and the qualification of the new council." And so the question then becomes, does that mean between the election of the council and then the qualification a few months later of the council, when those councillors are sworn into office? Or does it mean the election of a new council and then the qualification of the next council? Which seems like maybe at first an odd reading, and I favored the former reading versus the latter when I first gave this a read, but I consulted with my colleagues, including one of my partners and one of my associates who manage our labor and employment practice, so they deal with these personnel issues far more frequently than I do. And they said, no, absolutely not, because there's an issue with the councillors voting a potential increase or decrease, but it usually arises in the context of an increase, to their own salaries when they're already in office and it's not an election year. And so my colleague said, is there anything anywhere else in the charter that speaks to what can and can't be done within an election year? I didn't find anything, but I did find something in your ordinances, again, already been alluded to once tonight, which is in the responsibilities of the city clerk, which says that the city clerk shall present to the city council in the year of the regular municipal election, at the time that the mayor's budget is presented to the council, a petition to review the mayor's salary and the city councillor's salary. So at least in your ordinances, the city has recognized that this should be occurring in an election year. The idea being that all the councillors are up for reelection, and they may get reelected, they may not, but they're not essentially voting themselves raises. The source of that is conflict of interest law. We did some research on that within the past 24 hours or so as well, and we found that there's actually an opinion right on point. Slightly different facts than were presented here, but the bottom line was, what did the State Ethics Commission said? It said that it was concerned about circumstances where a city council would be increasing, in the case of the opinion that it rendered, it was actually increasing the mayor's salary where one of the councillors was running for mayor. And the outcome was, so long as the financial interest is not sufficiently identifiable, it's fine. But if the financial impact, whether it be an increase or a decrease in the salary, is sufficiently identifiable, well, then it runs afoul of the conflict of interest law. And in a circumstance where this council would be voting, for example, and I know we're now talking about a mayoral decrease in salary, but to go back to what we discussed before, city councillor salaries, let's say that the proposal was to increase your salaries by $1,000 a year. If you were to vote that now, you would be voting yourselves raises, because you will all be in office a year from now. So based upon this, our opinion is, if you were to vote a decrease in the mayor's salary, or an increase, or any change to councillor salary, not only would it not be effective this year, it wouldn't be effective until a new council is seated, which would essentially be 2026.
Okay. So as I indicated to Attorney Mead earlier today, there's certainly more of that abstract wrangling that we talked about beforehand that I'd love to have with you guys on that topic, but in the interest of moving us along, does everyone on the council understand the opinion that has been rendered?
Oh, got him.
Counselor Cruz, a question about the opinion that was rendered?
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Was it a question about the opinion that was rendered?
No, I sincerely appreciate the opinion. It makes perfect sense. I was hoping we could entertain a motion to give the cuts proposed to the mayor's administration leave to withdraw.
So I do have a number of councillors who had the floor before that, but after they have had their chance, and if they're, then you may make your motion, and if anyone else wishes to speak, it will be at your discretion whether to withdraw your motion. I have four coming up before you, though. Counselor Boeschman?
First of all, I want to make it very clear to the young man over there in the corner, I don't plan on cutting the budget. As a matter of fact, I wanted to pay $150,000. That's what I wanted to. So I have no intention of cutting your mayor's salary. I think she's under, she, whoever gets the job-
Counselor, we don't, we don't need to have a colloquy on politics with the attorney. So do you have an opinion to offer on the proposed cuts?
Yeah, I'm just going to give you an example. The town in Lancaster, I talked to a friend that was on CompCom, and it was a planner just the other day, because I wanted to find out what they did. Their salary for a town manager is $180,000, $180, and it's the exact same thing. The only difference it doesn't have is the mayor, town manager. But they get the same responsibility as a town manager, and there's a lot of headaches to the job. Look at, she has to put up with me when they call her every day, too. So I'm not going to support the cut.
By that logic, everyone sitting here should be making $180,000.
But I'm not, I'm not going to- But I'm not going to support the cut. I think the cut, I voted for it, which Councilor Deanna Tally's father was in office, and I said it wasn't enough money then. I maintain it. I'm not going to support any cuts on the mayor's salary at all. I think we're foolish if we do. I think you want to get qualified people. I'll go back to the statement that runs to take over the position of a mayor and get somebody good, then you got to pay. So in my opinion, I'll let Mr. Cruz stay, put the proposal, and I agree with him 100%. Get the thing to withdraw.
Counselor James Hawley.
So I recused myself last year for obvious reasons. So this is my first chance to actually say how I feel about this, and that is, the mayor's current salary is an abject joke. It's laughable. It's a joke. At 120, and I would argue at 150, it's a joke.
I agree.
Okay? That job should be at least $200,000. Quote me. Because as my colleague from Ward Two just said, there are communities with a fraction of the population that pay their head person over $200,000 a year. 120 is a joke. And if I lose an election over saying that or voting for 200, vote me out. I don't care. It's a joke. So I am against reducing this. I don't care what year it takes effect. I'm only in favor of increasing, and if I could do this right now, I'd put a motion forward to say, make it 200,000. I don't care what year it is. I don't care how bad the city's doing. The pay is a joke. Okay? I will say that the Chief of Staff's statement about throwing out the gender card, not necessary.
Right.
Completely ridiculous. All right? Because no one here had a crystal ball of who was going to win, but now I know where his chips fall. But this council voted on that raise, of which I was not a part of, because they voted on the position. The position. And anyone who knows me in relation to the current mayor knows for a fact tonight that I don't involve politics in this. I don't care who the mayor is. 120 is a joke. Okay? And, you know, I've had people come to me and say, you know, "Why don't you run? Not at that salary." Joke. So anytime this is entertained, I am a no, 1,000%. That number should be at least 150, at least. And that's low. And if the public needs to understand what the rationale is, show them a list of how many towns in this Commonwealth that have 1/4 of the population and 1/4 of the budget, what they make. The town of Harvard, just put out a rec for a town manager, because I follow the MMA website without going to the meetings. And the town of Harvard, the range is 175 to 210. Bolton, 188 to 230. Someone could make 230 in Bolton, where the biggest problems they have is a cow having a heart attack. All right? I'm regretting I wasn't part of that meeting last year. I chatted with the former mayor for, I said, "You know, the one time," because we haven't talked about this in 10 years, and the one time we do, you got to be in office. All right? Because I couldn't say anything. All right? That 120, I understand it went from 83 to 120. And also, the last increase we gave to that position was when the first female Asian mayor was here. So, you know, so 200,000. If someone put an ordinance change in tomorrow, I would vote yes. I don't care if we're free-falling. 200,000. Thank you.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, even if we want to have the discussion about what the mayoral salary could be, it has to take place outside of this budget process because it will not go into effect while this fiscal year happens. So it will not be reflected in our actual office expenses. Therefore, it should not be a cut because it's not a cut we can make for this budget. Thank you.
Counselor Schultz, and just for the record, I'll note that we're joined by Counselor Cregan. Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, I think that the whole process of having the budget and it's still kind of, I'm really not sure whether or not it can take effect January 1st. The legal department has rendered that it would have to take effect after the next election, it sounds like to me. So I, given a budget, at the time, I voted against it because I didn't think we could afford it. And I still, you know, it's nice to say, we can go 150, we can go 200,000, but a budget is what you can afford, and I don't think we can afford that. And I didn't think we could afford 120. I thought we could just go up 20% at the time and go with that. But based on everything I've heard tonight, I'm going to withdraw my motion at this time.
All right. And just for the record, I, personally, I'm hoping it won't come up in this particular discussion, but just as a procedural note, if a councillor withdraws their budget cut proposal, in the ordinary course of things, that should probably mean that it does not get voted on. But because it was on our list, if any councillor wished to insist on voting on a cut that was withdrawn by its sponsor, that would be in order. I'm not saying that because I hope it will happen here. I'm saying that because it occurred to me that that had not been addressed in the past. That said, I have Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm going to remake that motion in one second. I do just want to just remind, from my argument last year regarding why I was opposed to this big substantial raise was the median income in Pittsburgh versus the mayor's salary. And just for one final note, in the land where they're dealing with cardiovascular issues in their cows, the median household income is nearly three times that of Pittsburgh. It's almost 200,000, and Pittsburgh is just over 65. So that's sort of the argument that I had made. And yeah, I'd like to remake my motion to give every proposed cut to the executive office leave to withdraw. Every remaining proposed cut.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the motion?
On a motion.
On the motion. Counselor Boishman.
Is he talking about the Chief of Staff and the deputy?
No, this is for the mayor's salary, because that's the only item that has come before us thus far.
I will, then I'll amend my motion to just be the mayor's salary.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, you meant for it to be all of them?
The executive.
You can make that motion, certainly. Do I still have a second on that? Do I have a second? All right, there is no second for giving all of them leave to withdraw.
I amended my vote to just.
Oh, so it is now, okay. So just, all right, I have a motion and second to give all proposed cuts to the mayoral salary leave to withdraw. On the motion.
On the motion. I just want to make a couple of comments, talking about these other towns and what they pay the salaries we are talking about, and Counselor Cruz just made my point. You're talking about very affluent communities that probably the median income is probably $200,000 a year, so you can't compare us to them. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe when Mayor Wong was voted the raise, I believe she didn't take the raise. And I do withdraw my motion. I withdraw my proposal.
All right. As all proposals have been withdrawn, is there anyone who wants to make a motion to make these cuts? All right, in that case, we don't need a motion to withdraw them. They have all been withdrawn by their sponsors. We will simply not vote on them. All right. Next, we have two proposed cuts, one from Counselor Boishman, one from Counselor Fleming, for the Chief of Staff position. Counselor Boishman has the larger proposal. Counselor Boishman, would you like to introduce it?
Yes, I propose the $10,000 cut. There's nothing against, I want to make it very clear, nothing against the position or who's in the chair, and I want to make it very clear so they understand it. When Mayor Deanna Tally was in office the first year, and he hired AJ, and I saw the salary, I flipped out, and I was really upset, and I tried cutting it, but I didn't win. So I want to make it very clear. I feel that for somebody coming in with no experience at all to get $75,000 a year, it's ludicrous to me. It's, I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right. I think that my $10,000 proposal was more than fair, it still was making more money than AJ to make up the difference because I was.
So again, let's not talk about individuals.
I'm sorry, the position. That I still gave the position more money than the person that was underneath the mayor, Deanna Tally's position. So I'm sticking with my cut. I feel strongly about it.
Okay. Counselor Fleming?
Yes, basically, I can echo what Counselor Boishman said. However, what made me decide on this cut was the fact that the Chief of Staff is now able to take on another role, which is not part of the Chief of Staff, where he's going to be doing the facilities. And my thought was, now you've just put more work on your Deputy Chief of Staff. So to me, his role really isn't Chief of Staff. If he has the time to take on another role, then he's, obviously, the Chief of Staff is not busy enough to be making that salary. That was my thought process. And that's what made me decide on this vote, this cut.
Okay. Counselor Van Hazinga.
Thank you. So I just want to quickly look at what the previous Chief of Staff was being paid, or their grading step was 10.8. The current Chief of Staff's at a grade of 10.5, which is three steps lower, which equates to a salary which is 7.1% lower than the previous Chief of Staff. The proposed cuts lower that lower salary a further 13.5% or 12.2%. And I think there reaches a point where the reductions just, it's not equitable or fair in comparison to what we've voted to give other people to do the same job. In terms of adopting some of the roles of the Director of Facilities, I think this is a move of necessity, because a $100,000 position was eliminated from this budget. I don't think it's one of excess capacity. And I think this is a role that is very important to the function of the city, and I think it's one that we need qualified candidates who are willing to do it. And if we're going to cut the salaries this much, I don't think we will get that, and I don't think it's a good move on the part of the city, so I'm against it.
Thank you. Counselor James Hawley.
What are the qualifications of the Chief of Staff to run the Facilities Department? I have a question, it's a question. What are the qualifications?
So given that we're.
I have the answer, I just want to hear it.
Given that we're not paying for the Facilities Department, it's not a budget issue. If we have, when it comes before us, if it comes before us to be converted from an interim appointment to a permanent appointment, that will be the time to talk about resumes and qualifications.
But it was brought up, brought up several times as part of their role and responsibility. So that's why I asked the question. What is the Chief of Staff's qualifications that the former Facilities Director held in comparison? And if we're talking, see, that's the only position in this whole budget that was really cut, because he left for another job five months ago. And it was cut because the mayor never wanted it to begin with. She voted against it last year, including the custodian, because the building here is supposed to clean itself. So I'm not surprised the Facility Director position is gone because she never wanted it to begin with. The buildings are supposed to take care of themselves, and as we all know, the city's been, done a bang-up job at taking care of our facilities. Now we have someone at the helm who has less than zero qualifications in facilities management. So.
Let's not make it personal, Counselor.
It's not personal. It's a fact.
I'll just say, you know, I think Vice President Van Hazinga's argument is well-taken. I'll also note that irrespective of the question of qualifications, because like I said, we're not looking for a permanent separately-paid Facilities Director at this time, personally, my feeling would be, if the responsibilities of the role have grown larger, that's not a reason for the pay to grow smaller. I have, and have discussed with both the mayor and the Chief of Staff, questions regarding the assumption of the Facilities Director role. But I don't think that the overall salary for whatever combination of job responsibilities is encompassed now within that role, I don't feel that the salary on the line here is out of step with the job performed. And as far as any questions regarding experience, qualifications, et cetera, this is one of a small handful of positions where honestly, that's not our business. It's the mayor's personal staff. We can decide how much the position, the job responsibilities are worth, and whoever the mayor sees fit to fill that position with is the mayor's business, because the role is to support the mayor directly. 90%, 99% of all high-ranking officials within the city of Pittsburgh are our business, you know, to think about, are they the right person for the job? Are they doing their job adequately, and so on? But the mayor's personal staff, that's the mayor's call. And, you know, which I want to be careful here not to accidentally imply that I personally do not think either of the two staff people are qualified. That's not my point at all. My point is that it's not our call regardless. So if this is a number that fits the position, which personally I think it does, then it's the number that should be paid to the person in the position. Any further questions, comments, motions? Okay, Counselor Boishman.
I want to make it very clear to you and everybody else, I didn't cut the $10,000 because he was doing facilitators' job. It had no bearing in my mind. But, you know, don't come and tell me, and when I ask you a question about something, that you say, "We got to worry about getting sued." You know, not one time in my question on the outside about, we'll be coming up to it anyway, when I cut it. So my question is to you, I cut it because of a simple reason, and I say it again, I feel that coming off the street with no experience at all should be the reason why he shouldn't get that kind of money.
And you said so.
And I said so, and I'm saying it again.
Counselor Fleming.
I withdraw my cut.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else on this item? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. I can't?
You can make a motion.
I make a motion that we cut $10,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to make a $10,000 cut to the, or at least notionally to the line item of Chief of Staff. All in favor?
Of what, the cut?
In favor of the cut, yes, Counselor.
In favor of it.
In opposition? All right, motion fails by vote of 1 to 10, 1 in favor, 10 against. Next, we have a cut proposed by Counselor Boishman to the Deputy Chief of Staff in the amount of $5,000. Counselor Boishman.
I go back to relate to the previous person that had that job when he first started, and she had more qualifications and kind of had liver pills, and she came in, if I'm not mistaken, at $50,000 a year. I know she was there for eight years. I figure 5,000, to bring them down to 60,500, is approximately 5,000 some more dollars raised, that was counting inflation. I thought, forgot, didn't have that much experience. I felt that was fair, being very fair and being honest. And that's how I feel about it, and I don't want to hear about how he's running around doing nickels and dimes and everything else. It doesn't bother me. That's up to the mayor's, that's what she wants him to do, fine and dandy. I'm going by the position and what the previous girl started at, when she started, it was $50,000, and today we're up to $1. she started, it was $50,000, and today we're up to $55,000. It's $65,000. And I figure $5,000 raise would be—that $10,000 raise to bring him down to 60 is very fair. I thought it was fair. And they even pays him for his education. So that's why I did it.
On this proposal, Counselor Ren Hasinga?
Yes, just to run similar numbers, the previous Deputy Chief of Staff was at grade nine, step 11. The current one is at grade nine, step six, which is a reduction in five steps, which is a significant adjustment to reflect differences in experience. That results in a 13.1% decrease in pay to the current Deputy Chief of Staff. The proposal is another 7.6% decrease on top of that, and I think that's unreasonable. That's it.
Counselor Boeschman?
May I point out that the girl was there for eight years, so she gets step increases. So if you want to count that as a way—she started up at $50,000, net with the increases.
I'll just note that if she was there for eight years, assuming two-year steps, that would be a total of four-step—three or four-step increases, depending on when she started in the year. This would still be a reduction of one to two steps at least.
Counselor Ren Hasinga, did you—
Yeah, just—he's already five steps below, and at most, that would be four steps during the time the previous person was in the position.
Counselor James Holley?
The previous assistant to the mayor didn't just do that for eight years. She did it for over 35. For state rep, Emo Gogan, former state rep, Dean Attali, she did it for 30 or 35 years, not just eight. I just want to make that clear, that where she started was after 20-plus, 25-years in that field, in that profession, over several different positions at the state and local level. That's all.
Certainly, and, you know, I hope no one would take any of this discussion as a minimization of those years of service and experience, just in terms of steps within the city, I think, was the comparison that was being—
It's not—I'm not insinuating that. What I'm trying to say is that there are some in this room that have concerns about the fact that you have someone—and that's what some of my cuts in the future here are going to talk about—where you have someone who has 25, 30-years of experience walking out the door, and the person replacing them is making the same amount, which makes no sense. So, that's it. But I'll reserve comment for the future ones.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have further comments or a motion on this one?
I make a motion that we accept my cut.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to cut $5,000 from the position of Deputy Chief of Staff. All in favor?
The cut?
Of the cut, yes. Two in favor, in opposition. Motion fails by a vote of 2 to 9. Let's see. Next, we have—let's see, we did those. We have Counselor Boeschman cutting the entirety of the line item for Human Resources Assistant. Counselor Boeschman?
Counselor Boeschman, again. I cut that position at $56,845 for—I felt, and I still feel that—I think it's—the positions shouldn't be filled, because I don't think they need it. I think that she can handle with another person in there. I have two. I go back to the previous one, where some of you guys weren't on the board. There was only one. One there for years, years. And now they get two. So I'm sticking by my cut, so.
All right. Director Davis, would you like to speak to that cut?
Marcus can go first. That's fine.
All right. Counselor James Holley?
So, when Ms. Davis came on, she was by herself, and it took a lot for her to get one more person, which she got, which I voted for, recognizing the fact that, in my experience prior, I felt that the former HR Director couldn't get a lot done by himself. Wasn't a reflection of him, but the workload. In the fiscal '23 budget that I voted against, one of my proposals to reduce was this position, or one of the positions in her office, the third one. Is this the third one?
This is the third one.
Okay, so this is the third one. And in FY '23, in my cut proposals, I proposed not increasing the IT Help Desk Technician to full-time, not adding this position in her office, not adding the accountant—not because they weren't necessarily needed, but because I felt that the previous mayor was going too fast with adding positions that didn't even exist pre-pandemic. That was the budget year where a lot—all the positions that were lost in the pandemic were restored, and then some new positions were added. It was like four or five. And I was adamantly opposed to those four or five being added. I was okay with the pandemic ones, but not the new ones, because I didn't think we were in a position to add bodies beyond our pre-pandemic levels. With this proposal, there's no person in the position now—I know interviews are going on right now—and to be consistent, I didn't support this being created before, at a time when I felt we weren't financially—we were strong, but we were starting to see cracks in the armor, largely because of COVID. Here, we're even in a worse-off position. And, Mr. President, I just want to say that while we're talking about this position, my comment applies in this regard and anywhere else, where I've seen budgets in 2008, '09, '10, '11, and '12, where any position that wasn't filled was removed. This administration is choosing not to do that. There are no layoffs in this budget. There's no unfilled positions being removed, other than Facilities Director. So this is one like others, where I don't understand this. Are we in trouble or not? Because I've seen budgets where we are in significant trouble, and they did a hell of a lot more than this. I understand everybody's taken a pinch, but in terms of actual jobs, there's been no change. So here we are, using $4.5 million in free cash, the most ever used in 50 years. Some of my colleagues were apoplectic when we used $1 million, but they don't say anything when we use $4.5. And yet, there isn't a single position in here—this is one of them—that's been reduced—not because it's not needed, it's because of where we are. So I was against this two years ago, not because she may not need it. She may not need it, because I didn't feel it was the right time. And now that it's open, unfortunately, again, it runs—it's cogent with my argument, Mr. President, about another office in the city, because this plays into my calculus of why I'm going to support this. You've got the City Clerk's Office that is losing a half-time person in the year of a presidential election, when they've had four and a half people for 35 years. But because someone abruptly retired, they get screwed. But this one, they're not getting—they're getting it filled. That's not fair. And I'll save that for the other ones, too. If there's anybody that needs that person, it's her. But that's not what we're doing here. Makes no sense. So to be consistent, I'm going to support Counselor Boeschman's cut, and if—for no other reason than if we truly are in trouble—which I believe we are—you don't do this. Ask Lisa Wong. I mean, God almighty, we haven't done one reduction. But I'll tell you right now, next year, good luck, because 3.2 million of the 4.4 that we're balancing this budget with, poof, it's gone next year. It's never coming back. So I hope—we've got coverage for that. So whatever we're not doing this year, it's going to happen next year. There's no avoidance of it. So I don't like this, not because it's not needed, but because it's not filled. No one's getting a pink slip. This is the time you don't bring it on. I don't care what the reason for the need is. There's other departments that have needs, and they're not getting filled. It's inconsistent. So I'm supporting this. Thank you.
Do you have something to add?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to—which Counselor Dean Attali did—I know that it was mentioned at some point that this looked like it might be a new position. It's not. It was filled. The person left because they found a job that was remote—or hybrid, actually—in Worcester, because that's where the person lived. So the—again, with all due respect, I understand that you're not concerned with—in terms of what the needs are. However, the effect of this—not refilling this position—is going to be of suffering in some service, a decrease in service. My constituents, if you will, are all internal. So we have a number of things that happen in our office in terms of—and I think Counselor Dean Attali had agreed with this—one of the reasons why we had the second person, and then we really needed to pick up the third position as well, my office does all of the workers' comp. We do it all for the school. There are—that's like 1,400 people that we do workers' comp for. So when we took that over, not realizing the extent to which it was going to utilize one position, I essentially lost that other person, because, you know, workers' comp tends to be a bit cyclical, in terms of when school is in session, when it's not. Again, because we cover the school, a lot of our cases are from there. There are so many things that go into what this position does. It is supposed to be someone that does have some HR experience, so that we can do things like onboarding. They can do FMLA. They can help the generalist with workers' comp, doing job postings, because no matter what happens with our budget, we're going to have people leave, and there are going to be positions that are determined—they need to be filled. And so that work isn't going to stop. Then we've got my office—we do 10 negotiations with collective bargaining agreements. We have different employee disciplinary investigations that happen, which I'm not going to get into any details about that, but there are a number of things that go in to what is done in our office. And consider this, other departments, you know, which are larger, it is more—it's easier for them to potentially assume a cut. There's only three—there's only me, Brittany, and then this person. So not filling this, not allowing me to refill this position, that's 33% of my staff. And the services are going to go along with that. So if anybody has any questions?
So, next I have Counselor Ren Hasinga?
Yeah, just real quick, you know, Counselor Dean Attali did bring this up, that if we're going to make an effort to reduce payroll obligations in the city, the most prudent path is to not fill vacant positions. So this is a vacant position, so therefore, it's one that should be considered. And I can't say that it's not a shortage of work to do in your office, or many departments in the city. The only reason I'm considering this is currently vacant. And to be honest with you, as we're talking, I don't know which will—listen to the rest of the discussion. But we have expanded significantly in a number of departments, and this is one of them. So it is, you know, do we take a step back, because we have this opportunity with the vacant position in the current server, and that's my consideration.
I'll just say, I won't be supporting this cut myself, because I don't think that the solution to a problem in one department is to make a problem in another. However, I will say I am strongly in sympathy with Counselor Dean Attali. Surprising no one here, in the bench or the audience, I strongly am in sympathy with Counselor Dean Attali's concerns regarding the City Clerk's Office, and it is my fervent hope that, depending on how much of a savings we are able to realize here, depending on how our near-term future revenues turn out, I very much hope that that doesn't turn out to be one of the reductions by attrition that sticks, because I don't doubt for a second—all the statements that were made about workload in the HR office—I don't doubt it for a second. I could say an equal amount, and I'm sure our clerks here could as well, about work that needs to be done and potentially will go—well, I don't want to say will go undone, but will be very difficult to accomplish there. So I don't think this is—this particular line item is the place to find that money, but I am strongly in sympathy with the objective.
Counselor James Holley?
So, again, I understand we have to keep it within the confines of the proposal, but you have to talk about other areas in order to get the public to understand the rationale behind why this matters. And that's why I brought up the City Clerk's Office as an example.
And that's why I didn't object to it.
Thank you. There is inconsistency throughout this budget, inconsistencies. Doesn't make sense. This place is not getting filled. This place is. The police chief has two unfilled police officers and one clerk. Those were eliminated. The Facility Director is another one. That's it. The police, and nobody else. Does that make sense to anybody? DPW didn't get anything eliminated. FIRE didn't. But she did. The police did. So it's inconsistent. And that's what I'm upset about with this whole budget, is that are we in trouble or are we not? Because I've seen budgets where, when we're in trouble—and I'm not saying I want pink slips to go out—but we're just delaying the inevitable, in my opinion. There's an applicability across the board where there are unfilled positions—and I got it from Ms. Davis—of unfilled positions that are paid for in this budget. But the chief didn't get three unfilled positions filled in his. Ms. Belada didn't get her position filled, the halftime. In a year of a presidential election where they've always had four and a half, to me, it's like we threw darts against the wall and just whatever we hit, that's it. Whatever department had a retirement or they left, you're out of luck. In some cases, apparently. It's not applied about the—I'm shocked by that, that the only two departments, other than Facilities Director, that lost people—as far as I understand—is the City Clerk and the police. Now, we talk about fairness in this council. Fairness needs to be applied equally, is it not? How is that fair? Why is this position critical, but not that one? Not—the—I know the building—actually, the Building Office only has a halftime. They lost a halftime clerk, because the clerk retired. So there are some departments that lost people that aren't getting them filled, and there are some departments that lost people, and they are getting filled. And unfortunately, in this climate, you have to talk about priorities. And whether it is the intention or not, it's what it looks like. It's all about optics. This budget is saying that less police officers are more amenable than having a third HR person. If that's not true, then every one of these should be the same. You can't say, "These are going to stay unfilled, and these aren't." Because now you're telling the public and the other employees in the city, your department takes precedent over the others. Is that fair? How the hell can her department be less important than any others, when she's got customers out the door every day? Not well thought. And I'm livid now, because I forgot this. His department lost two officers. His department lost two officers. They're not important. Who needs them? So everyone's always talking about consistency and fairness, and I'm sick of hearing that because it's not applied equally. If you all believe that, then put your foot down and want it. I am not voting for this. If those positions aren't getting funded, then neither is this one. And if there are positions in the DPW, I understand, that are unfilled but paid for, guess what? I'm not cutting those. Because the comment, the complaints I get from my constituents isn't, hey, what's going on in HR? No offense. It's, I need my straight fixed. But again, don't listen to me. I didn't support this to begin with because I felt the previous administration jumped the gun on this. And I'm staying consistent now. This budget is using so much free cash, unheard of, and yet there's barely a scratch on personnel. And the only scratch you see is in police and City Clerk. Maybe there's others I missed, but there's not many. So, thank you.
Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, I had a question for Susan. You know, we, at the committee level and also in city council meetings, we talk about having such a difficult time filling positions. So what effect is this cut of this person have on getting people in place?
Without a doubt, a huge cut. It's that, this particular person, this position, is responsible to do, yes, obviously, some HR tasks such as, you know, FMLA and workers' comp and those things. But certainly, posting the jobs, updating job descriptions when a position becomes vacant, setting up interviews, setting up, doing all the onboarding when people come in. It's definitely going to slow things down. I, there's no, and honestly, I don't, I certainly don't mind, like every other department head that needs to work more hours. And I understand what Counselor De Natale is saying. But this is an important office and position because we do support all of the departments. We support everybody. There are only a few departments in the city that do that. We touch every single department. And of course, it is going to slow things down. There's no two ways about it. It will. There's only so many hours in a day that you can work and get things done. So it absolutely is going to. And that's, and that's pretty disheartening. Because we established that this position was needed. It's not frivolous. It's not, it definitely goes toward the support of every department that we're involved in. And so if we're looking at the next couple of years, certainly being more difficult and the possibility that, you know, if we don't, that we do potentially face any layoffs, well, you know what? In this particular year, some of these, without this third person, some of these tasks that are done in my office, they're gonna have to get pushed back to the departments. And that's not fair. That was, HR is to support, we're here to support department heads. We've changed and streamlined so much stuff, even with hiring and interviews. The department heads don't have to worry about that now. We do that. My office does that. And that's the way it should be. But there's only so many hours in a day.
And how's that handbook ever gonna get done, right?
Exactly. I'll tell you, honestly, it was the first thing. I would love to be able to call Bernie Stephens and say, look, I got it done. I mean, there are so many things, and to his credit, like, you know, there was a lot of stuff that he wasn't able to get done because he was the only person. And so now, yeah, there are some policies that we have in place, some that we don't. Obviously, that leaves the city open for liability as well. If you don't have a policy and you've got an employee that is breaking that policy and there's nothing written, that leaves us open. There are so many things like that, that I've tried to streamline operationally and workflow, but there are those items that are up here, and to get to them is difficult. Because I've got, I've got things right now that are behind. Because, you know, Gloria's been gone and I wasn't going to, that was the previous person in this role. And I certainly was not going to, even though the money is in my budget, and I was told that, no, it's in your budget. I'm not gonna hire somebody, what, so we could potentially lay them off? I don't function like that. And we can't function like that as a city. Who's gonna want to come work for the city if somebody does that? So, you know, again, I mean, we are, yes, I mean, it definitely is a very needed position. And I don't know who voted yes or no last year or the year before. But certainly, the needs haven't changed. I understand the financial ramifications of that. I absolutely do. But again, in perspective, there's myself and one other person in the office. So it's more difficult, you know, obviously, to absorb these duties.
Counselor Brochman.
I want to go step back. You just got done telling me that when you do the hiring, the department heads don't have to be there to do the interviewing and that?
I didn't say that.
Oh, I thought you said.
No, 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 the process, the process. They don't have to, you know, call and set up interviews. They don't have to do all the interview questions. They don't have to get all of the, you know, documents together. I have a couple of department heads that honestly, I mean, everybody's wonderful, but there are a couple that are like, listen, I know you got a lot going on. Do you want me, do you want us to call? You know, they've got staff, they may have some clerical staff or whatever in their office, and they'll say, you know, would it help? Do you want us to call and set the interviews up? Yes. You know, but typically, that is all my office. But no, the department heads all interview.
Now, I don't know how to say this because I think somebody's gonna take it very wrong. You're talking about to me that this person does this, this person does that. May I ask you a question? What do you do?
What do I do? Entertain all your questions and visits. I do, obviously, all of the labor negotiations. I conduct the employee investigations when there are things that come up. I have two going right now. Two weeks ago, I had four. I do some of the interviews. I used to want to do all of them with, you know, with department heads, but that's really not feasible. So probably half to three-quarter of the positions I will do, depending on the level of the position. I answer questions, I help do workers' comp stuff, I help do FMLA, whatever, and assist anybody that's coming in.
I was just wondering because every time I dealt a lot of times in HR in my previous employment, and they never sat down on negotiations. It was always a department head that sat down and talked to the employee and their HR wasn't there. And I don't understand why.
You mean labor negotiations? Is that what you mean, labor negotiations?
No, not labor, I'm tiring. Why you have to be there to ask questions when your department has to be qualified enough and they should know what, exactly what they're looking for? And let them do the hiring and HR just does the paperwork after, I'll use Nick, he's sitting there, I'm licking at him. And he says, Paul Brochman's gonna get hired for DPW. That's all, and you start the paper.
So Counselor, we're going a little bit afield from the position that's actually on the line item?
Well, I would just like to know what she did. She's telling me she, this one does this, this one does that.
Can I?
Yeah, I'm going.
So in that particular case, as I said, there are some that I don't sit in on and some people that may be new into a management position might not know what they can ask, what they can't ask. And so typically, I will participate in those interviews, unless it's a search committee or something, and then I'm obviously on it. But until, you know, a department head is comfortable, is knowledgeable, and they go with it. And it's always their choice who they're gonna hire. But sometimes it is better to, it really depends. It depends on the department. If there's a department head and then maybe a deputy or assistant or whatever that's gonna do that with them, you know, that certainly can help. But, you know, you try as best you can to have like an odd number of people interviewing.
All right, I yield the floor.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Oh, I make the motion that you guys support my cut.
There is a motion and second to make the cut. I don't think we can entertain a motion to order the counselors around.
On the motion? I just want to say that I, in all of my years of doing this, I have never said to anyone who is advocating for their office that what they're saying isn't true or that they don't need these things. I consider ourselves 11 co-CEOs in this regard with the mayor because the budget can't become law without our approval. Every single person is going to say that they need these jobs. These meetings annoy me because I know what Ms. Davis is gonna say. I know what everyone in this audience is gonna say on my cuts. Don't do it or hell will freeze. They're not gonna sit up there and say, do it. The reason the cuts proposed is not because necessarily, at least for me, it's not needed. It's about timing and the situation. There are many instances in the private and public sector where things have to take a hit. And the argument that this is a 33% reduction, I would argue the counter that the staffing has been tripled in the last seven years, and now it's going down by one because it's unfilled. And also because of the inconsistencies elsewhere in this package. To say that this job is important, fine. But the others are too, and they're not making the cut. It's not, it doesn't make any sense. And so I don't have any problem saying no because of that because it wasn't my call to not fund those positions and fund this one. And so what I'm trying to say is, everything Ms. Davis said, I already know. That's not why I'm doing this. I'm doing it because we don't have sufficient coverage for not just this year, but next year. And people need to keep that in mind when we discuss these cuts, that 3.2 million of the 4-4 is not going to exist next year. It's gone. And there's no plan yet on how we're gonna make up 3.2 million with pension going up again, health insurance going up. So if not now, it'll be next year. I don't see how it's not gonna be. So, but again, she's made her point. I just caution everybody, and you probably know this because you've been here enough, no one in this audience is gonna say, cut this number and by the way, take even more. They're all gonna do their jobs and advocating for why this needs to stay. We need to recognize that, but also look at the city as a whole and what else is happening elsewhere. Because we have to take the totality of the city into consideration, not just what affects the HR department. And while the HR department touches every area of the city, so does her office with the 42,000 people in the city. So does his office where, you know, his guys aren't answering calls with a cat stuck in a tree. You know? If I'm saying that losing officers and other things is less, is more precedent in doing that than her office, I guess I'm guilty of saying that. That's a false equivalency. It's either all or nothing, in the interest of fairness. Thank you. So I'm voting yes on this.
All right, all in favor of cutting, let me just get the number again, cutting $56,845 from the position of human resource assistant? In favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition? Motion passes by six to five.
Mr. President, respectfully, sir, we're about three and a half hours in and maybe a third of the way through, so I don't know if that's a time to remind the council. If we're gonna make it before midnight tonight, we may.
Yeah, I'll see if we can move things along. I will at least note that we're further through than we look because of the package deal proposed by Counselor De Natale early on, but we do have to start speeding things up. I'm gonna have to start clamping down on people a little. All right, so next up, we have a proposal from Counselor De Natale to cut $71,443 from the position of assistant city solicitor. Counselor De Natale.
So I've had, I was concerned in not providing an explanation on this, that some of my colleagues, if not all of you, would think that what I'm saying is we get rid of the position. What I am advocating for with this cut, and I'm hoping the mayor does if it passes, is redirecting this money to contract services. I, as you all know, voted against the privatization at the top position. One of the reasons for that was because I felt it inconsistent that all the reasons given for why we need to privatize the chief solicitor doesn't apply to the assistant. When Lemonster, Chelmsford, Boxborough, every single city in town that privatizes legal services does not have a full-time public employee lawyer on staff. So if you're gonna say that the chief solicitor needs to be private because it's more efficient, more experienced, more transparency, why doesn't that apply to the assistant? I'm not talking about the person, because I know the person is very good. And I know we need her. And I trust if this goes through, she will be kept and put on retainer, just like the chief solicitor's office. It makes no sense to me why we're doing it in two ways. And it's inconsistent and it's hypocritical. There's no transparency from the assistant because we don't do a time card. She's collecting health, I don't know if she is, but she's eligible for health insurance benefit, the position. The position is eligible for health insurance benefits and pension. Even though it's not 10 years yet, it's eligible. And one of the reasons I was told we should privatize is to save money on benefits. But it doesn't apply to that position. Makes no sense. The council made their decision, the mayor made hers, that she wants to privatize, so privatize it all. Have me, Talman and Costa, hire her on retainer, and have her charge the city hourly so we can get the bills every month and see what she's doing, in the interest of transparency. Because it only applied to the former solicitor, not the assistant. And by the vote, no one had a problem with it. So it's inconsistent. So my cut is not really a cut. It's hopefully a redirection. Because the budget that's in there for the chief solicitor is insufficient. That's not gonna make water, that's gonna have a supplement because they're already over budget this year, predictable. And they're spending less hours, predictable. But we're told that it takes a while to get on board. Well, I thought the most experienced people in the state, they don't need that time, but they do. So if it's good for the top, it's good for the second-tier position. Because we were so concerned with benefits, but we're not concerned here? Come on, everybody. The whole department is privatized except one position. Why? And the glory city to our, next to us, that does everything right, I'm told, they don't do this, and their budget's 230,000. What's our budget after this cost-savings measure in legal? 352,000. Now, I heard last week, and it was good I heard it because I needed the comic relief, that this is saving the city money. No, it's not. We're 120 grand more than Lemonster. And if you get the bills every month like I do, it ain't saving us anything. It's costing us more. Predictable. So I'm saying, let's be consistent. Put that position on retainer in the interest of saving money after all, on the benefits. I don't even know why this is gonna be, I'm pretty sure this is probably not gonna pass. Well, I'm not sure, but I don't get why it wouldn't. Because then if you don't pass this, in my opinion... Because then if you don't pass this, in my opinion, you just contradicted every reason you gave for why the top position should be private. So that's all. I'm not asking for her to go. I'm not asking for the position to go. We need it. Have her bill us every month, and let's see the bills. You know why I think that the city's not going to want to do this? Because when she starts billing us what she will bill us, it's going to be more than $350,000. Not surprised. So take the 71K, throw it in contract services, let Mead Talman and Costa add her on the roll, or have her bill us separately. And with that cut, if you approve this, I didn't put this on the list, I forgot, is $18,000 for the office expenses. Because, you know, the former solicitor had office expenses, that's a waste of money, so why are we doing it for the assistant? I can't wait to see how this goes, because it's, it would just run counter to everything everyone has said four months ago. It makes no sense. No city who privatizes legal has a full-time lawyer. Put her on retainer, let her bill us, let's see the charges.
Counselor.
And if the city is against it...
Counselor.
Because they know it's not going to be...
Counselor.
It's going to blow the budget.
You've made your point.
So that's what I'm doing. I'm not getting rid of the position. I want it to be reallocated, in the interest of transparency.
Thank you. Before, I've got two counselors waiting to speak. Before I do, I just, I'm not going to comment at all about the cut itself, it's not my turn. I do just want to point out that any lawyer coming into a new client, a new set of accounts, a new set of cases, will have additional onboarding time and expenses. That's, you know, you could have the best lawyer in the country, they'd still have onboarding expenses. Counselor Krujer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think I've made it very clear in regards to my, me not wanting or agreeing to privatize the legal department. And when I first saw this, and I know Counselor Dean Atali was right along with me, not agreeing with privatizing. And when I first saw this cut, I thought, Dean Atali's off his nut. But now that I was actually able to hear his reasoning for this, I get what he's doing. But it's still, I still am against privatization of the legal department. I still think this would be throwing, and I'm looking out for the city here. He's right. If we privatize the assistant city solicitor, our legal bill is going to be well over $350,000. Well, it's going to, it's going to be even more than that. So I understand where you're coming from, Counselor. I 100% do, and I applaud you for doing it, because it's showing the inconsistencies, and I agree with you. I was actually going to make a cut to the city solicitor, but, Mr. President, you submitted an email to all the counselors saying, "Only make a cut that you're sure is going to pass," or that you intend to pass. Fairly certain can pass. And I know from conversations that we've had in the past, that a majority of the counselors were in favor of privatization, but it didn't save us any money. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Just to clarify for any members of the public who didn't see that email, I didn't say counselors could only submit cuts that they knew were going to pass, or couldn't submit cuts that they knew weren't going to pass, but rather that counselors should only submit cuts that they genuinely supported the passage of. Because in past years, we've seen instances where counselors propose a cut with the intention of withdrawing it at the meeting for the purpose of generating discussion. That was what I warned against. Any counselor is entitled to submit any cut they wish, as long as it's a genuine proposal.
Then I apologize, Mr. President, I misread your email.
My apology if it was confusing. At any point, contact me for clarification. Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I remember when we voted on the city solicitor, that I was skeptical that it was going to save us money, but I thought, all right, we were assured that it would. And I remember saying at the time, that I think it's inconsistent to pay the city solicitor one way and the assistant city solicitor in a different way. And I think that, you know, what Counselor Jeanette Ali says makes sense. It's inconsistent. It's the same job. Why are we paying them in two different ways? So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Boeschmann?
First of all, I'd like to know what the attorney has to say on this, or the mayor, how would she feel?
Our assistant solicitor's here as well.
What's that?
The assistant solicitor is here as well.
Oh, I see her. Because I understand, may I say something? I understand that when I talked to the mayor about the position, when she was farming it, I called farm out, and she wanted to keep somebody in-house from Pittsburgh. And I thought that was a nice idea, a nice gesture. I know what you're trying to do, I understand what you're trying to do, but I really thought it was a nice gesture to try to keep somebody in from Pittsburgh on the team, on their team. So if she wants to talk, she can, just let me know what she thinks. Does she speak?
Certainly, certainly, if you wish to, I would just note that if you feel uncomfortable arguing for your own position directly, it's fine if someone else from either the legal department or the mayor would like to address the issue, it's entirely up to the three of you to, you know, put someone forward.
Good evening. So as all you know, I'm Donna Pollak, and I'm fine with the solicitor's office speaking as well. I know that a lot of you, some of you know what I do, but some of you don't, and I think that the solicitor's role and my role are very different. I work primarily with the building department, and I work with the health department, the fire department, and I do some roles for the police department. I go into court because the city is a corporation, and they have to be represented by an attorney. So I go to court a lot when we're trying to do code enforcement. Right now, I have 42 buildings that are on our list of buildings that we're watching, going to court for or trying to enforce. What happens is when the building department, or the health department, or the fire department tell people that they're not in compliance, for example, recently, we've had a building, multifamily, that the staircases were falling. We have another building in Clegon that's a multifamily, I think it's an eight-family unit, and the chimney's failing. So the chimney's falling into the building, and over and over and over, we've tried to get compliance, and we're not getting it. And typically, these are from absentee landlords or corporations that have bought properties within the city of Pittsburgh, and simply aren't interested in complying, but are collecting a lot of rent, so I go into court with them. I know that I don't submit a weekly time card, but I will tell you that there are times when I'm working 40 hours for the city, and there's times when I'm not. I know that this week, I've been in court, I've, in court Wednesday, I'll be in court Friday with them, but there are times, I mean, for example, when we had the pandemic, it depends. The health commissioner, myself, the mayor, were on the phone every single day, sometimes over and over again for hours, in working with daycares, working with the different departments within the city, working with the businesses, working with the churches, trying to get everybody to come into compliance. We were on the phone with the state regularly and routinely, at least two, three times a week, and we were on the phone on weekends. I remember being down the Cape and walking around my neighborhood over and over, just doing a meeting with the mayor and Steve and the state. I can tell you that if I were to bill hourly, if you divide my salary now by my hourly rate, you pay me for about 4.2 to 4.5 hours a week, that's me dividing it by 52 and not taking into account vacations, but if you take those into account, so maybe you pay me for five or six hours a week. There's weeks where that would work for you, and there's certainly weeks where it wouldn't. There's a substantial trial coming up right now for the city that, if it goes, it will surpass my salary. So that is essentially what I would have to say. And again, the city solicitor's role is different than mine. They don't go into court. They don't go. And typically, and when we go to court, we're either in Worcester, depending on what type it is, or we're in Lemonster. Pittsburgh also. We have some cases that we're enforcing, dog cases and other things like that, that we go to Pittsburgh for. But again, I only go when people are not listening to what the city is telling them. So the health department is repeatedly asking and asking them to comply, the building department is asking and asking them to comply, the fire department, I tend to point to what I'm talking about, so I'm pointing to the chief here. But when they're asking for compliance and they're just not listening, that's when I become involved. I also try to mitigate that by sending out letters, telling them, okay, within a week, we're going to go to court if you don't come into compliance. That's helpful sometimes, but a lot of times, it's not. So essentially, that is my role in the city.
And to add to that, you know, I would say that, you know, we went with this hybrid approach when it comes to the solicitor's department, so that we have, you know, that we have our assistant solicitor, Donna Pollak, who has been here many years and knows everyone, works well with everyone, knows all the historical issues. And then we have the team at MTC that, you know, handles the vast array of municipal issues as well. So I feel like this hybrid approach has been working, and, you know, they worked well together and work well with our departments. So I would ask the council that we continue this course and let us continue this work to make sure that we properly protect the city of Pittsburgh's interests.
So, so before I go to counselors wishing to speak for the second time, I have a few, I would like to note that I've been on the record as skeptical of the privatization of the legal department. I'm not going to sit here and say every one of my concerns has been addressed. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about Mead Talman and Costa at all, because they're not the ones on the block here. I will say, this is actually an inconsistency that I kind of understand. It actually does make a certain amount of sense to me, because of the high amount of in-court work done by our assistant city solicitor. Mead Talman and Costa, I'm sure there will be some cases that will come up where they will have to send someone to court for us for, you know, yeah, I see the mayor saying, "No, no, no, I hope not too." But, you know, looking at history as a guide, there will eventually be something where they'll need to send someone to court for major litigation. But for the day-to-day things, about, in a given month, about how many hours would you say you spend in court for the city?
I'm going to say, it's difficult for me to say, I'd say...
Just ballpark?
In court for the city?
In court, specifically.
It can be between eight and 40.
Okay.
It depends if we're having a trial, or if we're just having...
Right, of course.
It depends what we're doing.
So the thing is, those are things, those are hours that cannot readily be filled on that, in that number, on that frequent a basis, by an out-of-town firm. We would be paying travel costs every time, we would, you know, and we don't...
And prep time, because when I say I'm in court, that's just...
Right, I'm speaking specifically of the court hours, because those are the ones where we gain a benefit from having someone who is on location in Pittsburgh, as, you know, as distinct from something that, some part of the legal process that could be done in an office somewhere else.
There's also emergency hearings that I think you need somebody here, just when we had that.
Right, and so that's, no, don't get me wrong, my intention isn't to discount any hours that aren't spent in court. It's that the function of actually going to court, along with the associated prep time, are things that would be much more difficult to farm out to a firm whose headquarters is distant from the city, as opposed to some of the more day-to-day issues handled by our legal firm, which don't require them to be on-site in the city. So I see the argument being made, but this is actually something that I don't see as inconsistent on principle. I think that discounting any questions about the privatization in general, I think that this is a division of labor that makes sense in the circumstances. Counselor Van Hazinga?
Just real quickly, we heard from the mayor that from her perspective, this hybrid arrangement is working. I was wondering if just real quick, I could hear from Attorney Pollak and Attorney Costa, from your perspectives, is the hybrid arrangement working?
I never said it wasn't working.
I would say that from my perspective, I think that the law firm, quite honestly, has a lot of legal expertise there, a vast array of it. You have experts in different fields. I think that their expertise is actually very, very valuable. I mean, I have an airport question, they've got somebody on the airport commission. Zoning question, they've got somebody who does zoning. You know, I'm going to say the truth, I kind of doubted it at first myself, but I will say that the vast array of expertise that they have is beneficial, quite beneficial.
If I could, through you, Mr. ...
Go right ahead.
So I do think that the relationship and the way in which we've structured the representation of the city has been working well. It's been a relatively short time, let's remember, we were just debating this in, what was it, late January, so it has only been not even four months in total. To echo some of the points that you made, though, but to maybe put a different spin on it, yes, proximity is important, for sure. We were forthright in saying when we were before you, months ago, debating these issues, that we're not a local firm, we're not five minutes, or 10 minutes, or 20 minutes down the road. Having said that, we represent many towns and a city in very close proximity to, in fact, my main office, which is in Newburyport. We have a similar relationship with that city right nearby, 20 minutes down the road. I could be in housing court with great frequency if I wanted to, I could be in district court with great frequency if I wanted to, and yet we have the same relationship with a local attorney that's in the city that handles those sorts of matters. And I think the reason for that, I know the reason for that, and it's what we discussed with the mayor when we initially met with the mayor to talk about representing the city, we were, we immediately endorsed the concept of the assistant city solicitor remaining on, in whatever form, I'm not going to speak to structure, the council and the mayor will decide how you wish to structure it. But it made practical sense, because the sort of work, the sort of code enforcement work, whether it be building codes, or health codes, or whatnot that are done, it requires sort of an intimate knowledge and relationships in housing court and district court. I will tell you, we have cases on the books for the city of Pittsburgh, litigation, I've appeared in court on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh, there's appear court cases, there are appeals court cases, there, we don't do a whole lot of work in the district court and the housing courts, and I'm a bit out of my element in those courts, because those are, they're local, the attorneys who practice with frequency in those courts, they know the other attorneys, they know the judges, they know the clerks, they've got a relationship. They walk in, they know the local customs in those courts. So it does have, when you're doing work in volume, we do some of that work for our smaller towns. They may have a case a year, they may have a case every three years. When you're doing it with the sort of volume that you're doing it in a city, in a city like Pittsburgh, it makes a whole lot of sense to have somebody with that familiarity. So could we do this work? We could. We viewed it as an efficiency. Donna can speak to the numbers better than I can in terms of the number of hours she's devoting to the work and the frequency with which she's in court, but it made practical sense to us to continue this sort of relationship, where that kind of work, which requires immediate attention, presence in court, it made sense to have somebody that was literally around the corner from the courthouse.
Thank you. Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President, that's good timing for me. Yeah, I was one of the proponents of this initially, and Attorney Pollak, thank you for kind of, you've had a little bit of turnaround, it sounds like, and this might be working efficiently as we had hoped. And I'll be brief, because we've really talked quite a bit about this. You know, I just would encourage all the council to consider that we're getting sort of the best of both arguments with this hybrid approach. And the initial, the cost saving that I had mentioned, it wasn't sort of the direct costs that are brought up in formulas or anything like that, but it's the actual costs that we've had here, using, and I brought them up before, I'm not going to give you them, the costs that we've incurred totals, total legals with everything else we've needed to do, settlements outside council, whatever it was. So when you look at all of the numbers here, it appears to be working. Now, if this blows up, it blows up, but I just want to encourage the council to consider that you're getting sort of the best of both here with this prototype model, the familiarity, the local cost saving, and the expertise that we're seeing now with the larger firms. So I'm going to, I'm not going to support this cut, and I don't find it to be an inconsistency, I find it to kind of be progress in a hybrid model. I yield the floor, thank you.
Counselor Jeanette Ali?
I am completely floored right now. This whole discussion's been about whether you're needed. Did I ever say that this position should go away? Did I ever say that this position should go away? Did I ever say get rid of what she's doing? No. But everyone's focused on it because they can't argue the other side, the point I'm trying to make. She just said four hours is what we effectively get charged by her. Do you work four hours a week?
Typically more, much more.
The solicitor here said this works in whatever form. He didn't say it's gotta be public. Many other communities, in fact, all of them, don't do this. So we compare ourselves to those communities when it's convenient, when it's not convenient, we don't. I love this. This is why I did this, to highlight how ridiculous this is. I never said that this position should go away, I never said that what she's doing shouldn't be done, everybody's made an argument why she's needed, branded. It's not a good model to have her on contract and her bill us the time? That's insane. That's ridiculous. But how do all these other cities do it? The reason why they don't want to do it is because it's gonna cost a ton more, that's why. And I feel bad for her, she's getting a raw deal, all right? And I'll tell you right now, I've already brought this up during the last discussion about our budget in total. Those items in this budget back in the few, back in the past, were one-time settlement cases that had nothing to do with our system of legal services. If Mead Tullman and Costa were the attorneys, we still would've had to pay those settlements. I'm sick of hearing that. I'm talking about the direct costs because that's the, that's the uniformity, and it's not formulaic. It's, my numbers aren't theory, they're hard statistical data. Leominster was compared 230. No one talked about their one-time legal costs, they just said 230. But we don't do that here, we count the 1 million we spent on our, on a one-time settlement at the airport because it fits the argument, because there's no argument to be made, because it's costing us way more with less hours. And how convenient is it that we're talking about onboarding? What a convenient excuse. How many months is that gonna run? It's not onboarding. You know how I know that? I read the bills. They're like 10 pages long. Many of those bills talk about open meeting law issues that are fresh, they're not from two years ago. That's what it takes to be a legal service in this city, period. But people don't want to admit, this is costing more and we're getting less service. The data is clear after five, four invoices. I can't wait for the fifth because we're already over budget right now. We set aside 62,000, it's already at 80 with one and a half months to go, that doesn't include what you do. So this cut is not a cut to the position. If people don't like the repetitiveness, the reason why I'm repeating myself is for the last 20 minutes, I'd hear everybody say how we need her. I never argued against that. So the message ain't sinking in, so I gotta repeat it. Keep her, put her on retainer. Ms. Pollak, are you, are you capable of billing the city? Do you bill other clients?
Yes.
Is your effectiveness at what you do impacted if you're a contractor versus a full-time salaried employee?
I don't think so.
I mean, this, this, this is something my, my eight-year-old could figure out.
Well, that's inappropriate.
Counselor.
It's because we're saying two plus two equals four and we're all arguing it should be five.
Counselor, I have allowed you to reiterate your point because it was in question, you have now reiterated it.
Mr. President, no, everyone is saying what I didn't say.
Yes, and you've made that point now, you've made that clarification. We do need to move on or we'll be here another night.
This isn't gonna go through because it'll prove even more that this system costs more. No one ever argued this system's ineffective. I never argued that. I never argued them or your effectiveness. That wasn't the argument made, the argument was it's gonna save us a ton of money and we won't have attorneys on staff like the previous ones for the last 30 years that are playing video games half the week, who said 40 hours, 35 hours, 40 hours. You just said on a low pandemic, you did more. Court, you could be in, in court for as much as 40 hours, that doesn't include the prep time, that's just your court hours. What do people think it takes to be a legal service in this city? It takes a lot, doesn't matter who's doing it. But that's okay. Every year, I hope this continues, and I'll keep showing everybody that even at its base level, we're spending almost double, we're spending 33% what Leominster is right now in this hybrid model that's working. It's not what I was told.
Okay, Counselor, you, you have made your point very clear.
There's no reason you can't be a contractor and bill us the time.
Counselor, Counselor, you've made your point. Counselor Kuchar.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Dean Atal, you've made my, my comments even briefer because I was going to try to explain what this cut was to the people who think that we don't need Donna. Absolutely, we do. I've known Donna, I've seen what she does, I've known Counselor, Counselor Tree, and I also know Assistant City Solicitor Goldstein. You're in the muck and mire of the city, and I mean that completely. She's the one that gets her hands dirty, she's the one that has to go in. The reason why I know is because I had cases where the city was going after a client of mine. My client wanted to comply, it was involving a church and a tenant that was off the rails. And some of the stuff that I've, I saw just in that one case would make your, make your skin crawl. And me and Assistant City Solicitor Goldstein, we're in it. So, Counselor Walsh, when you say that, you know, she does the same as, you know, Counselor, you know, Attorney Mead, she doesn't, there are different, we both know there's different types of attorneys.
That's not what I said.
Okay, then I misunderstood you.
Apparently.
But she, she's in the muck and mire, so she should be billing us, but she, by the hour, but she doesn't because she's doing it as a salary. And we are getting quite, quite the benefit of that. And I think we should go back to the original way with the city solicitor as a whole. Thank you, I yield the floor.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the cut.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion.
With the intention that it's staying legal and that go to contract service.
Understood, with the, with the understanding that the cut is being proposed to redirect the money into a contract services model, not to eliminate the position.
On the motion?
On the motion. Counselor Schultz.
So what we're saying is, we're, if we go, if we go away from this hybrid model, we're gonna be paying a lot more for our legal services.
That's the theory, yes, and I think it's pretty clear that that would be the case.
Yes.
All right, all in favor? In opposition? In opposition to the cut? We have a vote...
Wait a minute. What was this motion?
Okay, let me, let me just ask it again. All in favor?
Of the cut.
Hands up high, in favor of the cut. All right, in opposition? All right, motion fails by 1 to 10. I am also in opposition.
Wait, thank you.
All right, next we have, skipping over the ones we already did, Counselor Dean Atal, $2,000 cut from IT Support City Computers.
I'm gonna speed this along by saying to the council that every one of these expense cuts that I've proposed is the same rationale as I did for the advertising. Now, I know there's several people here from those departments that want to speak to tell you not to do this or they can't function, but I looked at the last five years of history and unless there is an outlier here or there excluding the projection for this year because it's not true, every one of these cuts was methodically made with the understanding that 80% or if not 100% of the last five fiscal years, we never came close to what's budgeted in there now. So I find this to be excess and it should go away until we're better off and we can add it back. That's my rationale for everything, so I won't answer, I won't talk every single order, that's it.
So, in the interest then of moving this along, does everyone on the council understand what Counselor Dean Atal is proposing in terms of basically saying that our estimates of costs are too conservative?
And historic?
Or budgeting more than we need?
And historical cost basis.
Based on historical numbers. Does everyone on the council understand the point that's being made?
Yes.
In that case, for the remainder of these particular batch of cuts, what I'm going to do is simply ask if the department heads would like to state, would like to say anything really, but primarily would like to state for the record whether they feel that they can meet their needs with the proposed cut in place.
Could you be specific about what cuts we're talking about?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna start with just the one that I just named, I'll go to the next ones as we go. So this is IT Support City Computers, and the reason, Counselor, that I'm asking for this is because I think we saw when it was the city clerk's budget that the answer wasn't necessarily no, we can't go lower. I'd be, and I would like to hear from the department heads.
I can take a guess what Mr. Boney is gonna say.
We've gone through this many years.
Can I, can I? I've been doing this for five minutes.
We have a relationship, him and I.
A long-running relationship.
Just a minute, let's...
And, and on that, Mr. Vera has bought pizza for anybody that is hungry and wants some.
Much appreciated.
Pizza? Ooh.
Go ahead.
I know it's late, I'm gonna not talk about what IT does, I'm gonna talk specifically about these cuts.
Yeah, you can address both of the two. Just for the benefit of council, I'll say, these are $2,000 from Support City Computers and, sorry, $20,000 from Support City Computers and $2,500 from Public Safety Data Services, after which we will go to a brief recess.
Okay, we should've done this, we should've done this after the recess, that's okay. As you all know, the way I run this department is I run a very conservative department at the beginning of the year. If there's any problems, like the one we had last week, I have funding available to cover the bases, so that's how I run. And I, and I do try to keep within the line items of my services, but towards the end of the year, I mostly, besides a couple like fixed cost support, software support and public safety, I just put them together to spend what I need to get into the next year, through the next year. So that's how I run this department, it's unfortunate sometimes because I think that it keeps Counselor Dean Atal and I off the same page, but let me just say that he, he's looking at some facts on my budget. In FY '23, and I think I just got it a little bit mixed up, yep, I had $94,000 at the end of the year in available funds, and I think he would agree, in my encumbered funds, I spent, I budgeted 93, so there was a $1,000 discrepancy, and I think where we're falling apart, and I promise him, I won't let this happen again, I will keep him informed of this, is that I just throw those together. So one account might look like it has more money in it at the end of the year, but I promise you, we use it. Saying that, I mean, you know, there's a lot of cuts going on, and this $20,000, will we survive without it? Yeah, we will, there'll be less computers replaced, there'll be the possibility that I come back to you for equipment later in the year, but, you know, I, I don't think a department should be penalized, even if I wasn't using it. If it's what I feel is needed to do the job for the year, then giving it back is not a problem. So that's, that's my argument, and I'll keep it short, and we, I still love you, Counselor.
So, quick question, just to make sure I'm understanding properly, am I understanding correctly then that basically what the issue is, is that if we look at the information technology services subtotal here, that total amount has been roughly accurate to your expenditures, but some of the individual line items within get shuffled around?
Yeah, there's a couple of line items that I really try, like the, the contracted services software is, is rock solid because I have to pay attention to that because they're so, they go up so much every year and there, there's so many changes in software needs. And then the public safety is, you know, if there's a police cruiser that gets in an accident or something happens to a tablet on one of the fire trucks or something, that's something I have to have available to me at any time to replace instantly. Or communications to one of the substations, whatever it is. So those two I kind of leave alone for the most part, but every other line item in that service is, is put together at the end of the year and to the, the costs that we're gonna need to move on for the next year, but that I haven't spent throughout the year because I'm trying to be very conservative with our budget. So that's the misunderstanding and, and honestly, Counselor, I will do, I will do everything I can to keep you informed next year, so we won't do this again for the 23rd year in a row.
So your actual budget surplus at the end of the year is pretty close to zero.
Pretty, pretty close, some, you know, sometimes there's issues, like I'll, I'll submit for a server, but all of a sudden the equipment doesn't come in, it's in encumbrance, but I can't spend it on that at that point because the server is, is not, no longer available, if something's happened, there's a shipment issue or whatever, then that money will just get returned to the city.
Okay.
Okay?
Any questions from councilors? Counselor Dean Atal.
Well, I just, to expand on that, because this is my, what we be hearing from everybody, I asked Ms. Cronin for the auditor for the, for the five years' worth of status C reports, including the encumbrances, because the encumbrances are part of the actual equation. If you look at that specific line item, nowhere in the last five years has he spent $50,000. That was why I proposed that reduction. He says less computers will get replaced, but five years, he's been able to do what he's had to do without using that money. Now, some people may think that this is penalizing, I disagree. I look at it as, in a time of tight financial times, the cut that I'm proposing is not going to be less than what he has spent. It's still gonna have a contingency, for example, and again, I rechecked the numbers just to make sure I didn't make any mistakes, in FY '24, the projected balance at the end of the fiscal year in IT is gonna be 53,000 barring any additional encumbrances. FY '23, it was 27,000, FY '22 was 100,000, FY '21, it was 54,000, FY '20, it was 27,000. So, historically, he's returned money, and I'm saying with my reduction requests, it's not gonna impact his operations. I, I know he's saying it will, but it's not being spent. And I'm not criticizing him for not spending it, I'm saying if you spend X for five straight years and you truly needed more, why isn't that being used in a time like now? If we need to supplement, we will, but I, the data doesn't suggest that that's going to happen, and if it does, it's an outlier, but you can say that about any budget. So with all due respect, the data doesn't support that this is critical because even with the reductions, it's still more than what he's used. And I take very good pain in making sure of that in these cuts. I'm not saying if you spend 40 every year, you should get 40. What my cuts say is, give him 50, not 70. So there's still a little bit of a cushion, but not as much, and that's all.
With all due respect, I, I disagree with that.
I understand you.
I know, and, and I know, you hired me as the IT Director for the city, this is my budget, and that's all I can say, man, and, and with a promise that you and I will speak more if I can and I can clarify that encumbrance issue with you, and that's it.
Further questions, comments on these two proposed cuts?
Motion to approve the cuts.
Second. I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion, I'll just very briefly say, I don't have sufficient clarity to support this particular cut at this time. I supported the one in the clerk's budget because the clerk said, yes, that is likely within the, the amount that will actually be spent. I'm hearing a different story here and I haven't had sufficient time to look into it and, and figure out which side is correct. I'll take responsibility for that, by the way, I know I gave pretty much no time between cut proposals and tonight, that was just a scheduling snafu, but I'm not gonna vote on a cut that I'm not certain is actually sustainable for the department. I, I hope I'm making the right decision, you know, because certainly we need to trim any overly conservative projections wherever we can, but that, that's where I stand on, as of tonight anyway. Anyone else? All right, all in favor of make, uh, do we want, does anyone want to take these cuts separately? All right, all... All in favor of cutting a total?
I'd like to take them separately.
Oh, you'd like to take them separately. Okay. All in favor of cutting $20,000 from the line item for Support City Computers? One, two. I just counted too many. All right. Well, it looks like I'm the one outlier, then. So that passes 10 to 1. Second line item, $2,500, $2,500 from Public Safety Data Services. All in favor? Three. Opposed? Fails by a vote of 3 to 8. And now, let's take a brief recess, as brief as possible, just to, you know, take bathroom breaks and grab some pizza, and then we'll truck along. As of 10:09, we are in recess. And we have a motion from Counselor Cragan.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we continue this discussion to a later date. TBD as council as a whole. It is now 10:18, and I think we've all been at it for a good long time. I'd like to thank Mayor's Office for the pizza. I believe that's where it came from. But I think, I'm just going to put that out there. I think that we all could come at this with fresh eyes, a lot more productively right now.
Do I have a second?
I will second that. And speaking on the motion.
On the motion.
It's May 30, and maybe we could have gotten this done. In my experience, it's not going to happen. I would like to not rush through the rest of this and try to get it in within 90 minutes. There is no reason, Mr. President, we can't continue this to next week, or what have you. We have plenty of time until July 1. I just don't think we need to burden ourselves with being here till midnight and rush through everything remaining because we still have several to go and more people to speak. I understand some people have been here all night, and I recognize that, but this is a reason why we change the process to what we're doing now, because this would be the norm every meeting, where people would be sitting here for four hours and they'd never get a chance to speak, and then we'd have to continue it anyway. So it's not a criticism. It's just, I think we have ample opportunity to just continue this to next week without putting the process in jeopardy. My opinion. Thank you.
On the motion, Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counselor Dean Atal and Counselor Cragan. I think that in all fairness to the remaining departments, I think sometimes as the meeting goes on, we tend to be less focused. And I think that the budget that we're discussing requires as much focus as possible, especially in the current state that we're in. And as long as we have the time to do it, as Counselor Dean Atal has pointed out, I think that we should take that time and give the rest of the departments adequate attention. I yield the floor.
Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinarily, I would say let's power through, but given the fact that we have to legally stop at midnight and we're not going to make it, I'm fine with that. If it's appropriate, Mr. President, could we maybe do a show of hands to confirm a later date? Our schedule's, mine is pretty packed. So I want to be able to make sure I can make it.
So, yes, and I'll go, I have two other counselors waiting to speak, but I will note that I don't think setting a future date tonight is necessarily viable, simply because not everyone may know their calendar offhand. But I will reach out to everyone, including the Mayor's Office and departments, to verify availability for a future date.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The only time I would set a date that is not amenable to everyone is if we actually do get to the point where we've checked all our dates and we aren't going to get it done by the deadline, if we have to find some that everyone agrees to. But I will reach out and take input from everyone before setting a date. Counselor Kuchar?
Thank you. I also, I want to also reiterate the Counselor Cragan and Counselor Dean Atal's sentiments. I really don't think these marathon budget meetings do anybody any good. And in the future, we should split them up permanently. So we're not here until midnight. I mean, there is no rush. We have a full month before the budget is due. And I think we're just wasting time. We're wasting the department's head's time. And people have families they want to go home to. And, you know, staying here until midnight is really counterproductive. You know, and I agree with Counselor Walsh. You know, this is serious business that we're talking about here, and everybody should be fresh. And after almost 10:30, it does nobody any good.
Vice President Van Helsinga?
I'm fine with continuing. My only thought is that we have two pages, and we haven't even made it through one page yet. We have one section left, parking, before we're done the first page. Would it make sense to talk a few more minutes so we can at least get one page out of the way, and that we can be assured to finish just one more meeting and not two more meetings?
I think parking is going to take a bit of talk, given the cuts that are proposed. But I will just say, I said it to the department heads this morning when I met with all of them, and I'll say it to my colleagues tonight, by all means, constructive criticism on the budget process, especially before next year, is very, very well-desired, in fact. So, yes, that in hindsight, we probably would have done better with a long list of cuts like this, to split it in two and set it for two separate nights. We also probably should have had more time between the cuts and the cut meeting so that we could assess those items. Those are things that, you know, mea culpa. And hopefully, we will find a better process for future years. But I would support the motion myself. Anyone else speaking on the motion? All right. All in favor of an adjournment, continuing the matter to a future date to be determined? Any opposed? All right. We stand adjourned.